I'd like to call our June 25, 2012 public hearing to order. May I have roll call please? Mr. Thede?
President.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mrs. Crowell?
Here.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Mr. Kudrick?
Present.
Mrs. Fundaburger?
Here.
Mrs. Beard? Present. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need approval of the agendas.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the agenda presented. Support.
Moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Crowell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven oh. We are at the portion of the budget hearing and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Papazoukou.
So this section of the meeting tonight is the Truth and Taxation Hearing. And this is where we disclose to the public what the tax levies will be for the school year 2012, 2013. Again, I'm Sheri Papazoukou, Director of Business and Operations here for Ramblis Schools. So in 2012, 2013, we've actually two levies that the district will be collecting on behalf of the school district. The first one is the operating millage, which is on non-homestead properties. The total levy will be 18 mills. It'll be split nine and nine between the winter and fall collections, I'm sorry, fall and now winter collections. At this time, there'll be a zero collection for hold harmless mills. There'll be seven mills collected for the purpose of debt retirement services. There'll be zero collected for the sinking fund. For a total mills levied for the school district of 25 mills. And the bottom line here is just a reminder that the state does levy a six-mill on properties for purposes of public education. And this just gives you a tax levy comparison from 2009, 2010 up in the left-hand corner all the way down to the right-hand corner of 2012, 2013. You can see the differences between the years. That's just for purposes of illustration. And that's it. It's as simple as that. This budget that will be presented to you in about 30 or 40 minutes will have this information in it in regards to what the levies will be collected. And this information will be turned over to the city tomorrow. Any questions? And just to make clear, I noted that the mills for the non-homestead will be collected, half and half, nine and nine, so will the debt levy. I failed to mention that. So all of our collections for the Ramblis Community Schools will be, half of them are collected in the fall and half of them are collected in the winter.
Best over, best on non-homestead?
That is correct. And the debt service. So three and a half, three and a half on all properties for debt service. No questions?
We are at communications and expressions from the public. If there's anyone who has any questions or can do so at this time. Come on, if Ms. Dotson, if you could grab the microphone.
I'm just, okay, I'm just wondering if there is the additional vote that we're having in August. Is that what this, what she just presented, does that affect that?
So in August, there will be another operating millage for homestead properties on the ballot. At this time, the operating homestead hold harmless millage has expired. So the district at this point cannot collect it until it is approved by the community. And again, the district will be going for that in August. I believe it's August 7th?
Seven.
Okay. So it does not include the collection of that tax right now because we're not authorized to levy that at this time.
Were there any additional questions? Did that answer your question, Stacey? Okay. Did you look like you raised your hand? Did you have a question? All right, so there are no other questions and/or concerns, so we are at adjournments.
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Ms. Buckley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven oh.
I'd like to call our June 25, 2012 regular meeting to order. May I have roll call, please?
Mr. Thede?
President.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mrs. Crowell?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Kudrick?
Present.
Mrs. Fundaburger?
Here.
Mrs. Beard? Present. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we're at our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussions on these items. If any member of the Board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under the report of the superintendent portion of the agenda. A, approval. To approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education, May 14, 2012, special meeting of May 29, 2012, and the study session of June 11, 2012. B, approval. To approve the personnel actions as submitted by Rebecca Peck, Director of Human Resources, resignation, technology director, and GSRP classroom aide, retirement head custodian. C, approval. To approve the bills for payment as submitted by Sheri Papazoukou, Director of Business and Operations, in the amount of $2,918,806.70.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we approve the agenda submitted.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Buckley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is report of the superintendent. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item A, under my report, we've got a couple of summer construction projects paid for with what's left in our sinking fund, pretty much. So we've got two items. One for the new fire safety system at Romia Senior High School, which is badly needed. Also, second item for a resurfacing of the tennis courts at the high school, also badly needed. I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Papazoukou to give you the details on both of those.
So in front of you, you should have two separate resolutions, or motions, to accept work on the high school fire system and as well, the tennis courts at the high school. I don't know which order you have, but I'm going to start with the fire alarm system. You have in front of you the topic sheet. You have in front of you as well, a list of the vendors who bidded on this project. And you can see that the lowest bidder was awarded the project, or will be awarded if you approve this tonight, of $128,000 to complete the work.
Discussion.
Mr. McLaughlin and then Mr. Thede? Did you have?
Yes, Mr. Thede.
Okay, Mr. Thede?
Thank you.
I was wondering, next time we do something like this on the fire alarm system, I know the fire department does not have any jurisdiction in the schools as for routine fire inspections, but we may want to bring in Chief Allison next time because he has a wealth and knowledge. And we may be able to get by with some different things that maybe does not cost as much. These companies come out and they want to alarm everything in all these zones, but we may want to bring the fire chief in next time as a courtesy and ask him, hey, we want to redo these alarm systems. Where do we need, what don't we need? Because he may save us some money in the long run.
I will note that. I know that we use a state fire inspector through the process as well. But I will note that, Mr. Thede. Just a few, go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin.
I'm sorry. Two questions I get. The first one, there's a huge variance between these bids. I was going to ask you to explain that.
Well, the one thing that the construction manager Barton Mallow is telling me is it's a timing issue. Some of the vendors who are busy most of the year, this particular vendor fortunately did not have a lot of work scheduled for beginning late in the summer. And this project will probably go through November at no, you know, the students will not be in an unsafe environment at that time, but it's really a timing issue on when the vendor could get in. So they're not paying people overtime to be here on weekends and during the evenings.
Thank you. And the second question I get, the, by approving these, are we then approving Barton Mallow and paying Barton Mallow past July 1 of this year?
That's correct.
Because it was my hope and intent to bring them up when we have our organizational meeting in July and put that out for bid. I don't feel we're getting the best bang for our dollar with Barton Mallow.
To answer your question, yes, this does include Barton Mallow as a construction manager. And I'll give you a few more details in regards to this project that some of you may not have, that may be thinking but haven't asked yet. There is a 10% contingency built into the program for unforeseen expenditures. There's general condition work, plans, things of that nature, about $9,000. And then the construction manager fee for Barton Mallow. So just wanted to make sure that you're aware, there's other projects or other costs in addition to the $128,000. As you'll see in a few minutes when I do the budget presentation, this did come under budget quite a bit. We actually had about $275,000 budgeted. And the total cost of the program, including everything, the design work that we're already in depth with currently, the total cost is expected to be about $210,000. And again, that includes $13,000 of contingency money built in that hopefully we won't have to spend.
Sheri?
Go ahead.
You're saying this project's going to go till November. We got some kind of guarantee from these folks that this project is going to be wrapped up and fully operational 100% by December?
It is built into their contract that they will sign once the board approves this.
And if it's not, what's the penalty on their head?
I'm not exactly sure what the clause is. I can find that out. But I know that when the bid was put out on the street, as they would call it, the expectation was in the bid that it would be completed by November.
Do we know what day in November?
No.
I did have one question, seeing that, you know, there's that possibility that we are going to decide on choosing a different company, Barton Mallow, in question, then how does this impact the project that they're working on?
Well, all the work that would be up to date with the construction manager, because they have been involved with this process, they have been responsible for putting the bids together, working with the vendors, having a pre-bid meeting, I mean, all of that work, definitely we would be responsible for payment to the construction manager up until that point unless the district makes another decision.
Does this void out any contracts or guarantees that we have on construction from past projects that Barton Mallow has worked on?
No, they're, no.
Okay.
Those have all been completed.
Okay. So there are more of less contracts that we have with the individual companies and not through Barton Mallow?
Correct.
Okay.
Let me just point out, one of the things that we pay our construction management firm for is looking out for our best interest throughout the duration of the project and should we run into any difficulties after the project is completed. That's important with any construction project. I'm not sure that we wouldn't be placing some of those things in jeopardy by changing that. If we were to, you know, not approve this project now, again, it wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to do this for another year because it's quite a bit of work that needs to occur over the summer when the school is down.
Any additional questions?
Just one other thing, how is this going to impact the custodians in the building? Are they going to be in an area they've already cleaned, summer cleaned, and now a construction crew's going to go in there and start tearing stuff back and have to go back and re-clean?
Well, they'll definitely be in the building and some of the summer cleaning would, yes.
Coordinate with the custodians?
I will ensure that the director of maintenance make sure that the scheduling does not contradict what the custodians have already done in terms of summer cleaning.
Great, because they're short-staffed in a lot of buildings, so we don't need them.
Okay. That's it on questions? Any other? All right, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, move the Board of Education to accept the recommendation of Director of Business and Operations and Barton Mallow, Construction Manager, to award the bid for Ramblis High School Fire Alarm System to the lowest bidder, CEI Electric Company, for the total of $128,000.
Support.
By Mr. Kudrick, supported by Ms. Buckley.
Discussion.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sheri, can you provide us with those completion dates that are in the contract?
At this point right now? No.
No, just when you can.
Absolutely. When I got them, I will make sure that Mr. Weiss shares them with you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven oh.
The second project is to resurface two different sets of tennis courts. One is a battery of five, the other is a battery of three courts. I know some of you have visited the tennis courts to see what shape they are in, and I think you can attest that the wear and tear on those tennis courts is, they're on their last leg, let's just say. So we have done the legwork for the fee for the project to be implemented in terms of the design, went out for quotes, and the, there were two vendors who quoted Star Trek and Goddard Coatings, and we are going to, again, award that to the lowest quote, which is $29,000. Just to be specific, one of the batteries with the five, the battery of five courts is $18,000 for resurfacing, and the battery of three is for $11,000. And that one's really right on target with the budget of $30,000 that you'll see in a few minutes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Are either of these companies, Romiless companies?
Not that I'm aware of. One is out of Lake Orion, and I can attest to Star Trek where they're located at, but no. Sorry, no. They did not.
Thank you.
I just have a question, and it's just so that I can know what battery of courts?
I got to ask that today. I think it's just a general term that they use when there's more than one court.
Okay.
There's two sites at the high school. One has five courts and a fence around it, the other has three courts and a fence around it. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Chair. That brings up another question. I know when we were talking about how badly these needed repair, there was some discussion about padlocking them, which never happened. Once they are repaired, are they going to be padlocked so that only our teams have access to them?
I guess it's at the Board's pleasure, you know, sometimes community members do come in.
John Glenn, Wayne Memorial.
Noted.
I, yes.
We're going to surface the courts, but we don't know what kind of sports.
Good question. Very good question.
Yep.
Very, very, very good question, and we did talk about that internally. It was one of those issues where, as many other issues, we have to prepare for the summer in case, we have to prepare. If we don't do it now, there will be no tennis team later. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, but we did have an internal discussion about it.
Yeah, that's basically it. We, you know, we're going ahead as if we are going to have sports because primarily we have to be ready for the start of school, which means our facilities have to be ready. We have a requirement with our athletic league, you know, that we offer a minimum number of sports each year. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place on this issue. I realize that on the surface it makes no sense, especially if we end up, you know, not passing that millage and not having sports. On the other hand, those courts will be pretty much unplayable after another frost cycle. And the problem we run into is we cannot make those types of repairs in the spring and have a girls' tennis team use those courts in the spring. If we started those repairs in the spring, we're at the mercy of the weather and the thaw cycle, and realistically, the girls would have no place for their home events.
So we cannot put a date on it, but maybe we might do it after the summer.
Well, if we wait, we stand a chance of not getting the vendor in here because, again, these are types of vendors that are very busy over the summer because most of this work is done when it's warm outside.
Also too, the, could you talk a little bit about the sinking fund? Because I know that there are some resources that are still left in that fund that can only go towards building maintenance type issues.
The sinking fund can only be used on repairs and maintenance. The district isn't currently levying it. We did not levy it last year. We made a commitment to the community when we passed it that we would, we would be able to use some of what, some of what we needed in debt to cover sinking fund. The community passed it. But at this point, we're not in a position where we have enough tax dollars coming in to pay our debt services, so we had to, again, go back and contribute all of the seven mills instead of 6.25 to the debt service. There's about 368, at the end of this fiscal year, there'll be about $368,000 left. If you've been around, you probably know that we did a facility study three, four years ago to, when we passed the sinking fund or right after, to figure out what it was that the district needed in terms of repairs and maintenance. And at that time, it was over $14 million. I'm happy to report, we're actually down to about 13, a little over $13 million at this point. We have a long way to go. These two projects were on that facility study. Unfortunately, because we're not collecting a levy on that sinking fund anymore, those funds are also being depleted very quickly. I don't know if that helps.
Any other questions from Board members?
How long does it take to resurface?
I don't, I.
They didn't give a date on how long? Three weeks, a month?
No. I mean, just from, you know, this is going to be pure guesstimate, I would say the work would probably be finished in about three weeks, if not sooner. They have to go in, fill the cracks, and then resurface. But again, that's a guesstimate. Don't hold me to that.
This includes marking and everything?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I think on this one, we need to wait. It's not a safety issue.
Is there like a window from that company in regards to, did they give you any pushback on when they could start?
No.
As far as if they started, say, in the fall? Are we using the tennis courts in the fall at all?
No, but we are at the mercy of the weather. That's the only thing we have to worry about.
I deal with construction on a lot of things, and honestly, I think these folks could probably still do the job in August with the weather and even into September here. I think this might be a nice deal thing to kind of hold off until, especially after August 7. Right now, it might be a wise thing. There's no sports until spring, so they're.
None in terms of tennis, you're right.
They do lay roads in October and November.
Okay, so we are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It would be the construction manager, Barton Mallow.
Okay, so I'm at the discretion of the Board. You want to just table this and bring it back up?
I make a motion, and we table it until after the election.
There's no motion to table, so you can either have the superintendent withdraw it and bring it back later.
Not that I think this will affect your decision, but I want you to understand too that these quotes are valid for 30 days. So we would have to sign these prices in the next 30 days for them to be valid. I'm not saying that the vendor will come back with a higher price, I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
So.
I just have a question. Could we, if we signed, is it our discretion when we start it? I mean, we could sign it and lock the money, the bid in, and have the start date afterward?
Pushback.
I'd hate to tell you yes tonight because I'm not sure.
If you sign it, it's a contract.
A contract, it's a contract.
Well, you would be approving, you're not signing a contract, you would be approving us to sign a, to sign a contract. So if your intent is to have the project done but to wait until after the August election, you know, we would have to then go to Barton Mallow and say, is that doable? And then, you know, and if it's not, we may come back to you, and at that point, you can say, well, then, no deal, or we'll table it until after that, or we may say that's entirely doable.
I say, let's table it until, until, especially after August, we got to figure out what we got first.
So as Mr. McLaughlin said, then just withdraw it for now and then revisit it?
After August?
After August.
Okay, next item, we had a study session on June 11 regarding budget reductions and
Yeah, we're at policy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you kind of jumped in.
I'm messing up my own agenda, all right. My mistake. Since about January, we've been working on board policy revisions. We now have had the revised policies available to the public, so we've completed our obligation regarding the second reading. It's time for the Board to approve those, those policies as presented.
Madam Chair, make the motion, move the Board of Education to approve the second reading and adoption for the proposed revisions to policies as presented.
Moved by Mr. Kudrick, supported by, I heard, both Crowell and Beard, so I'll just give it to Crowell. Okay, any questions? All right, so we're good, taking a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven oh.
Just before I move on to advise the Board, what happens next is we send those policy revisions off to MASB. They then integrate those into our online board policy that appears on our website so people online have access. And then you'll get updates too. Those of you that have hard copy notebooks with board policy, you'll receive updates. That process takes usually about three weeks or so to complete. Okay, again, next, item D, discussion item. Sheri has a presentation prepared regarding the 12-13 budget.
Well, this is tax intuition. Thanks. She's going to do the budget. There's some extras. Get one, Sheri, one of the four. Let her know which one we're going over first, so she can start that one first.
We're making copies for the audience, so.
Would you like me to wait, or do you want me to get started?
You can wait a couple minutes for her to give, that'd be great for them. You do both ways.
In case you're wondering, we do not have air conditioning, air conditioning at Central office, we're not on Thursday. Getting warmer by the second.
Sheri, there's a copy there, I don't need it. I'm on the table. It's a fan in the hallway, we can plug it in.
I, I was told to wait a few minutes, is that still the case?
Yes, we'll wait.
Okay.
That way she can get the copies to the audience.
Yeah, go right ahead and do that.
Hey, do we have a fan that don't have a jet engine on it?
When you turn it on, I'm like, I just don't speak really loud. They won't hear me. When you turn it back off.
I'm thinking, though, you know what? If we do the one way down the hallway, it may blow.
Just some circulation, right?
Yeah, if somebody wants to run down there.
And this one, too. Business.
Hey, ask Dana to do the one way down here. Ask Dana to turn the one in the front of the bathroom, down the hall, maybe.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started.
We're going to start.
Okay. So what we're going to discuss here tonight are two different budgets. One is the end of this fiscal year, which ends this June 30th, which will have an effect on the 12-13 budget in terms of the amount of fund balance the district would have left. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. This is pretty, a pretty simple presentation. The 12-13 presentation gets a little bit more in detail. I'm Sherry Pappaziglou. I'm the Director of Business and Operations here in Ramelus Community Schools. And some of the things that happen from when the board first adopts a budget back last June is we budget very conservatively to make sure that, you know, we've put ourselves in a decent financial position so that we don't have any surprises come our way. As the year goes on, again, this budget was actually adopted a couple times during the year, and this will be the final budget, but projections become more real. Health insurance becomes more real as we're a self-funded district. Utilities, depending on the weather, how many or how much of delinquent tax collections we get, are there any prior year state aid adjustments? And then we have payroll and PCMI, which don't change too much. PCMI is our contracted services for substitutes. But in some cases, we don't know exactly who's going to be out on a leave for the district. So those things can change throughout the year. So the total revenue to end 2011-12 is about $36,500,000, or $600,000, I should say. And you can see the makeup. The magenta section is about 52%. That comes from the state. And the remaining huge balance is 31% from local, makes up about 83%. So again, 83% of our revenue is retrieved from state and local revenue, state aid and local taxes. On the expenditure side of the equation, we're spending about $38,300,000 this year. It shouldn't be a surprise that the majority of our expenditures are related to staff. The yellow area is 51% is in terms of our salaries of all of our staff, and 30% reflects the percentage of benefits that we spend in terms of the total budget. Ironically, it's around 80-some percent, 81%. So i-if you look at the revenue, state and local, it's just covering the amount of salaries and benefits for all of our employees here in Ramelus. So how do we expect to end the year? We expect to end the fund balance at about $1.3 million. But keep in mind, there are certain things that we are obligated for right now that are really true to the 12-13 budget. One of those items is the purchase of technology to replace its, the replacement of the kayak labs at all of our elementaries. We had a five-year plan. We are on the last leg of that plan. Last year, we decided as a district, because of the financial difficulties that we were going through, that we would spend funds on curriculum. 12-13, we're going to be spending funds on technology to finish out that plan and get those computers to where they need to be. They're on their last leg. So that's around $286,000. Just to give you some detail, $225,000 of that is for the computers, and the remaining portion is for some prepaid expenditures in terms of the 12-13 budget that we've already paid, but we will not book it as an expense until next year. Which means that the available amount of fund balance that the district has to spend next year, or uncommitted, is a little over $1 million. We've been talking about this fund balance for several months now. I think back in February, I gave the projection that it would be around $1 million. Until the audit is conducted in October, this is the projection, it typically gets a little bit better as things are closed out, maybe $100,000, $200,000. I'm going to cross our fingers for that. So we're right on target for what we projected back in February. In terms of food service, food services has to have its own separate budget. Our, we have a management company that oversees the management of the food service department, and it's Chartwell's Dining. We do charge about $70,000 of indirect costs for administrative and operations, which is legal. We have three separate grants for fresh fruit and vegetables, around $57,000. And we are, this year would have been the third year of a cost reimbursable contract with Chartwell's. We began the year at about $151,000, brought in over a little, a little over $1.7 million. Expect to spend, and then, you know, for the next, to close out the next week of the school year, or fiscal year, $1.8 million, which we spent $80,000 more than what we brought in. But that does still leave us with a fund balance of about $72,000. As we talk about 12-13, I'll talk about some of the things that we're going to have to do because, again, this fund balance is getting depleted over the course of the years as well due to increased retirement and employee benefit costs. We also have a community education fund, and that covers the pool and a latchkey program, two pretty small programs. We do have a consistent rental of the pool to a program called DART. We only offer latchkey at our Wick Elementary School, and I'm happy to report that the latchkey program is a surplus program. So in reven, in terms of revenue, the program brings in about 17, almost $18,000. We spend about $13,000. So the profit there is about $4,600. And that actually gets transferred right into the general fund. It's not our intention to make this a moneymaker. We do want to make costs equal. We want to balance out the revenue expenditures. But in this case, I'm happy to report that we will be putting 40, almost $4,600 into the general fund in terms of this program. Not a lot, but every little penny counts. In terms of debt service, I talked a little bit about that earlier. This year, we levied 6.25, I'm sorry, we levied seven mills. That should be changed. That's an error on my part. Seven mills. We can only utilize that levy to pay principal and interest on our debt, on our debt. This year, the district refunded its 2001 bonds, and there'll be a $1.4 million savings over the life of the bonds. We did that in September of 2011. Unfortunately, the district had to go out to the school bond loan fund in May of 2012, not too long ago, to borrow a little over $1.5 million. I mentioned a little bit earlier that in terms of property values, if the property values go down, so do the, so does the revenue in terms of what we're able to collect on the seven mills of levy. And that's having effect, it's having an effect on the amount that we're able to collect and then make payments. We're committed to make payments as you would be on a mortgage. So we had to go out to school bond loan fund. The good news is, over time, we will be able to, you don't have to pay that right away, but over time, in terms of the levy, the levy ends up going down a little bit, the amount that we need to pay off debt in 2022, '23, and we'll be able to pay that back at that time. So again, we came into the year about $323,000 good to the fund balance. We spent almost equal, about $154,000 was spent, more than we brought in, which leaves us $168,000 in fund balance. And again, these funds cannot be carried into general fund. They have, they're their own separate entity and have their own specific purpose on what we collect and expend for. And then lastly, the sinking fund. I mentioned already that we had no levy in 11-12. We had a small amount of delinquent tax collected, so we didn't expect any revenue. But we did get around, I think, $4,700. And again, it's only utilized for repairs and maintenance. The two things that we did accomplish this year out of our $14 million facility study was to design the fire alarm system that we talked about earlier. We implemented the design in the 11-12 budget. And then we did replace boilers at Barthwick and Hill Creek, which is a major endeavor, or was a major endeavor. Those projects are all complete. Again, the sink, the high school fire alarm system work will be conducted late this summer through the fall. And again, we started about $749,000. You see about $7,500 of revenue. I talked about delinquent tax collections and interest income, a small amount that we do get. We spent about $388,000. So we spent $380,000 more than we brought in, but still left, left us a fund balance of $368,547, which we can carry into 11-12, or excuse me, 12-13, to accomplish the projects that I talked about earlier. And that's it for 2011-12. And I'm sorry, Board of Education, I keep turning to the slides, so I'm sorry for not looking at you.
Did anyone have any questions in regards to this presentation?
Madam Chair, this is just a recap on where we're in and of that.
Yeah. That's correct. The fiscal year ends at the end of the week, so June 30th. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and get started with the 12-13 budget.
Yeah, she has that.
Another handout?
Are we ready?
I guess.
Documents. No, it's a different one. I'm skipping. I did, you were right. Okay, the 12-13 budget hearing. So tonight, we're here to talk about the fiscal year 12-13, which starts on July 1st. Now, these years keep coming up very quickly as you're in them. So I'm going to go real quickly through our budget process. We prepare, prepare a budget calendar. Our board has been talking about this particular budget since February, and we've had a lot of discussion in terms of this budget. We gather requests from buildings. We provide them with site-based budgets. We compile the most up-to-date state aid information as it exists. We project student enrollment. We compile staffing lists and issues. We project finance fringe benefits. Prepare preliminary budget. I just told you about that. If necessary, we prepare a budget reduction plan. We update the MFR through June, and then we're here tonight to get a final budget for, that starts July 1st. So I'm going to go through some assumptions that are very important to note as we're talking about the numbers. Right now, we're expecting a stable state aid per pupil. Just the $470, I just wanted to know, although it says stable, don't forget that we took a cut, $470 last year. So that is continuing on. We, the budget predicts that MIPSers will be a part of the state aid calculation, which we get about $150-some dollars per student for that. It includes a little bit of best practice money and at-risk money. As we talked about millage levies, if you weren't here earlier, the district will be levying 18 mills on all of its non-homestead properties. And this budget does assume that we pass the Hold Harmless Millage in August at the full rate in winter of 2013. So we will not be, if we pass that, we cannot collect it in August. We cannot collect it in September, October, November, or December. We would have the ability at that time to collect it in January. With that said, we assume that transportation and athletics will be here because, again, we're assuming that the Hold Harmless Millage is going to be passed in August in terms of this budget. In terms of decline in enrollment, we expect that we will lose 200 full-time equivalent students. And just as a reminder, the state now calculates that as 90% of what your September student calculation or student numbers are and 10% of what your February. It used to be a 75-25 split. 11-12 was the first year, so they're continuing in that effort in this year as well. The budget reduction plan has been implemented in this budget. It assumes the sale of property, that the board moving location is moved, the minimum class sizes for all courses, and that the Head Start program will now be housed at Corey Elementary. So that building is now going to be at full capacity. Instead of them renting the Burton Center, they will move to the Corey and pay a monthly rental fee to the district. And that staff reduction and retirements will be reported in here accordingly. It assumes that the retirement rate is going up 2.91% or 11.9%. We actually pay 24.46% of all staff salaries for the retirement system. It's going up as of July, well, as of October 1st at 27.37. It's huge to the district, about $800,000 right there. Health insurance, we are increasing, the budget assumes an increase of 10% to our healthcare costs, and we've implemented a cap if applicable. Some of our contracts that have expired or some of our other groups, the cap will be applicable to them starting in September. So that is also reflective here in that budget. Not all groups, some groups. The rest of the groups will get there. That we're in year three of three implementation for our school improvement grant at the middle school. It assumes that we will collect about $339,000 of Michigan Tax Tribunal casels. That's actually a small number. We actually collect around $708,000 to $800,000 on annual year. But in terms of being conservative, as much as we can in this case, I've only assumed $339,000. So if we get more, it'll put us in a better position. It assumes that we will get our Medicaid reimbursement catch-up in 12-13, again, something that we typically get every year. So it's not going out of the box in our conservative measures of budgeting. If the grants are not confirmed, they're not included. Sometimes we get grants throughout the year. Again, to reiterate, we're replacing elementary desktops at 225, and those are, again, are at the kayaks. It does include that the district would have to go out for a state aid loan coming up in August. The interest rate, expected interest rate right now is 5%. It'd be about $190,000 interest expense to the district. This year, we also have a state aid note, and it's around 3.1% interest. So hopefully, that interest rate goes a little bit lower when they go out to market. That's just purely a cash flow issue with the district. The district does not receive a state aid payment in September, and we still have payroll and bills to pay. So we have to take out a loan to basically keep our cash flow moving during that time. Just some examples of revenues. We get state aid, taxes, grants. We get some tuition from adult ed and summer school, rental revenue. Sale of property is now included in this budget, and athletic. So this just gives you what our foundation was all the way back from 2002, 2006, 2007. At that time, it was $9,035. 2012-13, we're at $8,392 per student. You can see the differences in revenue. It might look a little bit despairing that 11-12 is a $37 million, $37 million revenue, and it's going up to $38 million. But we do have, included in the budget, the sale of some of our properties, almost to the tune of $2.4 million. So keep that in mind. That's why that's reflected that way. Just to give you enrollment history, unfortunately, I predicted, again, that we will lose 200 students. It's unfortunate, but that has been our trend in the last several years. So to be conservative, we want to make sure that we factor that in as we build our budget in terms of what we will receive in revenue. If you're looking for a number, it's around 3,100 students that I'm predicting for next year. We're at 3,343 right now. Okay, so getting into the revenue, about $38,257,000. Again, local represents 31% of that, the state 48%. The percentage doesn't change. It's about 70, let's see, 79%. It went down a couple percent from this year, but that has to do with the It went down a couple percent from this year, but that has to do with the fact that we have about $2.4 million of land sales in here, which would increase the other portion. We don't consider that local revenue. We consider that other revenue. So what kinds of expenditures does the district have on its books? Salaries, increments and steps, if they were applicable in these last few years, they haven't been. Fringe benefits, retirement, FICA, technology costs, teacher supplies, transportation, grants, maintenance, and utilities. Those are just some of the bigger known expenditures. So we expect to spend around $30 million, a little over $39 million. Again, it's no secret that salaries and benefits takes up the largest portion of our expenditure side of the equation at 82%. Purchased services are for things like contracted services. We contract service for all of our substitute teachers. Supplies and materials is pretty self-explanatory, and capital outlay, a little less than 1% is 100% the technology, $225,000 computer replacement at the elementaries. Okay, just another couple slides. This slide just shows you from year to year, all the way from '07 to '08, you know, what the district is paying in terms of healthcare and retirement, as far as a percentage of the district. Last year, these two expenditures made up more than 25% of our budget. This year, it's almost 27%. It's 26.8% of our budget. Again, retirement rates are set by the state and have to be paid on all employees that are of the age of 18 or older. And as you know, it's no secret probably where you are employed that healthcare benefits are going up. And I just said to you a few minutes ago that our prediction is at least 10% higher than it is this year. The next slide gives you the dollar amounts associated with those two large expenditures. So just in terms of per student, if you think about each student in our district, the darker purple-blue box represents the retirement, and the light aqua is the insurance per student. And last year, it was about $2,910 per student, and this year, $3,077. Again, a huge expense to the district. So if you think about the $8,392 that we get, automatically, 3% is going to healthcare and retirement. Just something to note. Okay, so most people here want to know what the bottom line is. And again, we're beginning our fund balance around $1.3 million. The revenues are $38 million, a little over. Expenditures, $39,500,000. It puts the district in a deficit spending for the year of about $1.2 million. We're spending $1.2 million more than we're taking in, which leaves us with just about a $44,000 fund balance, which is about .11% of our total expenditures. Let me go back. And that's what the district, or the administrative team at the, in Rymelus Community Schools is recommending. We call that Plan A, which incorporates the things that I talked about, sale of property, moving the board meetings. Plan B, it has been suggested or recommended by the Board of Education that there's some other things that they'd like us to look at in terms of reducing expenditures, one of which is the energy manager, and the other is to eliminate a support person at the administrative office, as well as an administrator position at the district level. And if we incorporate those three additional items to the budget, the district would be in a deficit spending for the, not for just the year, but in total, we'd be actually $346,000 short of making a balanced budget.
Go ahead, Mr. McGlocklin.
Thank you. With all due respect, Mr. Pozzaboo, that statement is not true. And I quote, Madam Chairman, on Monday, May 14th, there was a motion prepared for the board by the administration that called for approximately $5.3 million in cuts, including the elimination of athletics and transportation. I introduced the motion, adding to it, quote, "the elimination of a board officer, office administrator, literally said, from this building, a board office support staff member and the energy manager." The board passed the motion with a six-to-one majority. These additional cuts would save the district approximately $200,000 by the district's own documentation in that spreadsheet that's been handed out for months. In a communication sent to the board on June 15th, the superintendent stated that he and his administration will present a budget for the board approval that does not contain the specific cuts that were made in my motion on May 14th. I find this to be direct insubordination on part of the superintendent. The board provided the direction for the cuts on May 14th, and as of yet, this board has not rescinded those cuts. The administrator's role is to carry out the directors of the board, not the other way around. For this kind of insubordination to go unchecked is a failure of the oversight responsibility of this Board of Education. Madam Chairman, I call for the immediate disciplinary action against the superintendent.
I would suggest that since this concludes that what Mr. McGlocklin is saying is only partially true, and this concerns a personnel matter, I ask for a closed session here with the board.
Move that we go into executive session, Madam Chairman. Game on.
Would you like me to finish?
Chirp, chirp.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor, so.
We don't have support.
And we don't have any support.
Okay. So for the most part, not to get.
Try to pass the millage next month.
So not to get into the, a lot of the details, but one of the reasons that it puts us in a deficit spending mode is due to the fact that we expect that our utilities costs will increase as a result of not having an energy manager on staff to conduct the things that.
We need to let her finish the presentation, and then we'll take questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then in terms of per pupil, again, we got in about $8,392 from the state in local revenue. There are additional revenue, I talked about sale of property and some other things like tuition. But if you just look at the per pupil revenue, it's about $12,173 we get. We're spending $12,577, which is $404 per pupil more than what we're taking in. And again, we're using fund balance to offset that. As you can see, when we're down to about .11% of our total expenditures, we will not be able to continue the trend of using fund balance because it doesn't exist anymore. And this just shows you where we were back in 2002, 2003, until we are, you know, we had some peaks and valleys. And you can see here in 12-13 that we are basically out of money. $43,000 will be left in our fund balance. So this is an illustration of the expenditures and revenues and fund balance. I'll try to move real quickly through the rest of the slides in terms of the other budgets that I have to present tonight. Again, fund balance, why is it important? I don't even know if I have to say this, because I say this every time I talk about budget, but to offset unexpected decreases in revenue, in terms of taxable values or straight appropriations, if we have emergency expenditures. One of the things that we valued in terms of a sinking fund is that if there was an emergency expenditure, for example, I don't know if it's called an emergency, but right now, you might think it's pretty warm in here, sinking fund would have been able to cover that type of expenditures. In terms of not having a sinking fund balance or levy, we would have to take those funds from general fund, which just depletes the fund balance or depletes more money going to students. The cash flow, you know, we'll have to borrow in September 2012, and it's just good fiscal management, just like at home, to have a savings account. What to watch for, enrollment. Again, we hope that $200 isn't true. Unfortunately, that's been our trend. Hopefully, we'll have a better year than the past few years. It's predicated on the passage of a home harmless millage in August. You know, we have to look out for a large number of tax appeals. Some of those cases are won, which means that tax revenue has to go back to the organization or corporation who paid that. And then, I always leave it on here, airport expansion. No, we don't have any new updates or haven't heard anything, but I just continue to watch that. Let's talk about school dining or food services. Again, Chartwell's is our dining service management company. Will be in year four or five. We have one year left on that contract. Again, $70,000 worth of indirect costs can be charged to that program. And just a note, that we will need to replace more tables in the future. The last time we did that was the previous year. We were able to purchase some tables at the high school, but unfortunately, some of our other buildings are in need of that replacement as well. Not gonna spend a lot of time here, again, and beginning at about $72,000 in fund balance, spending about 1.7, I'm sorry, bringing in 1.7 in terms of food sales and free reduced lunch counts. But basically, we're spending $50,000 more, which will bring the fund balance down to Most of this expenditure increase is related to healthcare and retirement. Again, I kind of went over those quite a bit in the general fund presentation, but it'll leave us with $22,000. At some point, the district will have to look at raising prices to lunch, breakfast, to be able to continue to balance this budget, but not for 12-13. Community education, not much has changed. Rental of the pool in a Wick latchkey site. Again, I'm happy to report that we expect that it'll bring in $3,900 or so. The reason that has gone down from about $4,500 is due to the fact that, again, we have to pay increases in retirement and healthcare, which lowers the amount that can go to general fund. Debt service, again, seven mills. It's utilized to pay bond services. We are getting information now that we will have a possible refinance in May. We'll start looking seriously at that in February. The projections right now are to save the district about a little over $1.5 million over the life of the bonds. And as the presentation will show you in a minute, we'll have to take out another loan in 2013 to the value of about $908,000. Again, that will be repaid in, starting around the year 2022 to 23, 2022-23, if the market conditions stay as they exist today. Again, we're just barely getting by in debt service, expecting to end at about $2,000 in fund balance. If the taxable values end up getting a little bit worse than what we expect in this projection, it would just mean that we'd have to take a little bit more money out of the school bond loan fund in May. And lastly, sinking fund. Again, we just talked about that. We will not levy in 12-13. They can only be used for construction and repair. As you heard earlier, fire alarm system, we're gonna scratch the high school tennis courts for now and talk a little bit more about that after the millage goes up to a vote. And just as a reminder, I've talked about a $14 million facility study. We've made about $1.4 million in repairs and maintenance out of that facility study, but we do have a long way to go. We've got $13.6 million of things to repair or maintain, including parking lots and things of that nature. But without funds, we're not able to do that. And again, we expect that the fund balance, there'll be no revenue because we're not collecting on it. We may get a few delinquent taxes, but I'm not gonna project that at this point. About $320,000 of expenditures, that will go down if for some reason the board does not agree to resurface the tennis courts, and it'll leave us with about $40,000 or a little bit more. Actually, this is predicated on a little bit more expenditures than what the bids came out, because the bids didn't come out till Friday. And that's it. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Okay, so we can have some decency in order. I'm gonna go with the questions from the board members, and then we will then take the questions from the public, okay? Mr. McGlocklin.
Thank you. Sherry, in your projections on the winter collection, assuming the millage passes in August.
Yes.
Am I correct that the assumption then, if the millage, for us to collect the 100% of that, that the administration would be recommending to, that we, because by law, we have to collect all or nothing in the tax collection? We can't just do 50% of one.
We've had some discussions with our attorney, and there is some language written for this particular situation that districts would face where they don't pass the millage. It's only applicable if you do not pass the millage, and I think you go after another millage of the same type in the same year. They do allow you to collect it. I'm getting more information.
Could I have that information forwarded to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Madam Chairman, Sherry, on your Plan B, whether it's resulted in deficit, can you go into that a little bit more, why you think it will launch?
Okay.
When we had our, that wasn't listed as something that would take us into deficit.
So the only, sorry. So the only two things that are different, I shouldn't say only, the two things that are different about Plan A and Plan B is one, is Plan B implements the reduction of the energy manager, but assumes $450,000 increase in cost to, in terms of utility usage. The additional increase, or decrease in cost that would be reflected here as well is about $60,000 for the reduction of the administrative support position within the district. And that was split half between transportation and half between, not technically my office, but it's considered a central office function, this particular position. Those are the only two items that are different. Did I give you enough information? So although we would save on reducing staffing with the energy manager, we would be, see an increase. We expect, I mean, that's our projection. That's the information that we've been provided by energy education, is that the expenditures would increase as a result of it.
Okay. Question number two, just for discussion purposes. Since we have been doing this program for, how long have we been doing it?
Since 2006, '07? I think we started in August.
Is this something that our building administrators could possibly monitor, to make sure that the temperature is turned down, that this is turned off, or that is turned off?
Those are the simple parts of the program. What many people don't know are the intricate details of what goes on. There are audits conducted every weekend in terms of the energy manager goes in to make sure. It's really a proactive approach, to make sure that the temperatures, the dialed-back temperatures are set at where they should be. Let me give you an example at the middle school. If we have an event there, let's say on a Thursday night, and it's warm out, and we don't want our community members roasting, we want them to enjoy the event, we actually leave the air conditioning on a little bit longer than we would normally leave it on. If someone doesn't forget, or someone doesn't remember to turn that, dial that air conditioning or turn it off, and put it back to a higher setting so it's not as cold, we're spending more money than we would if they left the temperature alone, if that makes sense. So those are the things that they go in and look at. That's what Charlie does. He spends at least 30-some hours every two weeks.
Okay, so what, excuse me, just again, I know that you all have questions. Could you jot them down, and we will revisit those? We're trying to get the board members, get their questions out, and then we'll continue with you all, okay? Thank you.
Okay, my next question, in figuring this, did you, I guess in a deficit, did you take away his salary?
Yes.
So his salary on top of that?
Yes. And we, we've talked, a couple weeks ago, we talked at length about the energy manager and the services that are provided. And one of the things that I mentioned to you, I know I keep hearing, you know, if an administrator or building principal could do that, but it was also suggested maybe we give it to maintenance or custodial staff on an hourly basis. If we were to do that, at that point, we would be paying overtime. I mean, at a minimum, we're looking at mid-20s, which is already what we're paying the energy manager. So the savings in terms of having an employee, an hourly employee do it, there wouldn't be any.
Plus retirement.
Plus retirement. We do not pay retirement on the current energy manager as he's a retired school employee.
Okay, so say, say we did this, and we decided, and we start, we eliminated the emergency manager, and we found out that the cost did go up. Now, is this something that we can go back and revisit on the next?
You could go back and visit it.
Where our budget is at?
You could go back and visit it. I just wanna share with you one more time that, once we, part of the commitment to the energy education, now, for four years, we paid them a monthly service to assist us through this process to get us where we are. That is no longer being conducted on a day-to-day basis, although, when we need them, they are here free of charge. If we eliminate the energy manager, we no longer are able to get the services from energy education. If the district wanted to go back to the program, we'd have to start all over.
Okay. Do we have enough knowledge, say, Mr. Kidwell left tomorrow, so we would have to have enough knowledge to be able to carry on?
Correct.
In that instance, correct?
Yes. We would have to train staff, somebody would have to train staff in detail about the program. Part of his job is to take our monthly utility bills and put them into a system that will truly reflect the cost savings or cost avoidance, because, as it's been mentioned before, you know, temperature goes down, and you, if you look year to year, this was a warmer year in terms of winter. Those things are all calculated by the software program. Mr., the energy manager actually goes in physically on a monthly basis and enters all that information, so that we're really getting a true picture of the savings.
Mr. Thien.
You're good?
Oh. I thought you should get a couple more. So a couple of questions, and a new one just popped up. How come he's not training our staff right now? Why, why don't our energy manager help our custodial and our maintenance and our department heads do all this on the foreshadow that if he left, we wouldn't be left in a lurch? I mean, so why is he not taking weekly or monthly trainings with our maintenance, because our maintenance people are our custodial engineers, whatever we want to call them, our main people inside? And secondly, if this event at the middle school is on Friday, and somebody forgets to turn the air off, does he come in from home? Does he leave on vacation?
He actually, every single day, he logs into the system, even when he's on vacation. He logs into the system to do a broad overview of where the temperatures are in each building, and he can pinpoint which ones off, and he goes in and sets it. He can actually almost do that from home. But in most cases, he comes in to make sure.
But he can almost do that from home. Can he do it from home?
He can do some of it at home, but not all of it.
So does he come in on, does he come in on that Saturday morning, or is it, or does he call somebody, or does it get fixed on Sunday?
He comes in. If he sees that the temperature is not dialed where it needs to be, he comes in and he fixes it.
On Monday, or Sunday, or Saturday?
The weekends. Most of his work is conducted over the weekend.
And how many maintenance janitors, custodial engineers do we have?
We have...
Roughly. And we have four, we have one middle school, junior high, junior high, high school, community, and four elementary schools. I remember when I went to Gordon Air School here, I had one custodial engineer that I saw every day, and that was his building. Why can't we, with 15 people, why don't we have a, a head person in that building? And that's their responsibility, along with the principal. And, and with no pay raise, no nothing, that is their pride and joy, that building, to keep it cool, to keep it hot, to keep it energy safe.
I'd like to respond to that, and I'll respond to your first question as well. First, I want to back up for a moment and talk about the contract with Energy Education. Energy Education is in over 80 school districts in Michigan, and as I shared with the board on June 11th, they rank those school districts in terms of energy savings. Romulus is ranked number five in terms of cost avoidance, meaning of the 80 school districts that participate, 75 of them don't save as much proportionally. You know, some of them are big and some of them are small. But in terms of energy savings, we're, we're on track right now to save about 30%, 38% of what we spend. So if we, if we spend $100, we're on track to save $38 for every $100 that we spend for this year. That's real money. The agreement with Energy Education said that they will do this, and then there's certain things that we have to do to honor that agreement. The first thing that Sherry mentioned, and I'm not sure everybody heard it, is that for the first four years of our agreement, we pay them half of our savings, all right, which is big money, $100-plus thousand dollars a year, correct?
No.
For the first four years of the program. Once you complete, and during that time, they're providing training to our energy manager, but they require that one person do this. The reason they require that one person do this is because they know that that process will work more efficiently, and that we will save more. It makes them look good, it makes us look good, and it saves us money. That's the system that they put in place. The minute we go outside of that agreement and try something else, we're free to do that, but what we're basically doing is terminating the agreement. Now, what I also want to point out is that after four years, we stopped paying them half of our savings. This is, so this is a program, I've already given you information that says this program really has worked. And I was dubious about this program when the board adopted. I would have been, I was really surprised, pleasantly surprised, that we were getting the savings that we had. So the program is working marvelously well, all right? So, and we're not, we're no longer paying that company any money. If Charlie Kidwell were to retire or resign, we would have to pay some fees for a new person to be trained, all right? That basically means attending some workshops that the company provides. Their headquarters are in Texas, so somebody going in, Charlie goes to Texas once or twice a year for updates and those types of things, professional development, all right? So we could, there's a provision in the contract. They know that people come and people go. Charlie's stuck with the program now for five years, and he's a master. Again, we're in the top five of over 80 school districts. That's, that's a nice thing to have under our belt. They, they promote us. Now, regarding why, why isn't Charlie training other people? He does. What Charlie does is he's teaching people habits of mind. It's more than just teaching people how to turn off the lights and dial back the air conditioners and all those things, but making those programs work, because we were always trying to do that, is having someone like Charlie monitor and send little notes every week. Each building gets an update. There's, he has a list of things that he inspects, and most of those walkthroughs he does on the weekends, because he needs an empty building, so that he can get around to all the places without disrupting instruction. And so Charlie provides that feedback to each building. Another thing that Charlie has done, at our suggestion, is he's involved our children. He's made our children energy-wise. Those children compete for green stickers, for energy stickers, all right? Classrooms compete, buildings compete with other buildings, all right? So not only is it a program that saved us money, but it's become a part of our instruction. It makes our kids practice things that are environmentally friendly. So again, we have a good program. I'm not sure if when you went to school, you knew about what night custodians we had, but again, classrooms cannot be cleaned during the day while kids are in there, and our custodians have always worked normal shifts. So I would be, I wasn't here then, but I would venture to guess that there was always a night custodian that came in, or two, depending on the building.
Night leader.
Okay. But there was, there were always people. You may not have been aware, when I was a kid going through school, I sure didn't know what went on after hours, other than if I was at a sports team, I saw somebody I didn't recognize pushing a broom or cleaning or doing those types of things. So have I answered your question?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Any additional?
Yes.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Tom, go ahead. Not answering.
Yeah. I just want to, just want to clarify something here, just to make sure. So Sherry, this, the Plan B, does or does not include the central office administrator?
It does not.
Does it include a central office admin administrator, admin assistant, sorry about that?
It does.
Does it include the energy manager?
It includes the reduction of, I should say it like that.
Okay. And it includes the energy manager's salary?
Correct.
Now, if I am correct, and I'm not a math whiz, but how you come up with the 347, $46,000 deficit is based on the projected savings from the energy manager, correct?
450 some thousand dollars.
So by taking the 450 and subtracting his salary, we're throwing that 450 that we spent?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
Ms. Buckley?
Okay. So again, just, just so I'm clear. So if we decide that this is something that it's nice to have, but we can't have it right now, and we come back to revisit it, how much would that cost us to do?
So...
If we noticed that, that there was a big, big rise in...
So you're...
And utility costs, so what, at that point, what would it cost?
You're asking if the energy manager was eliminated, what will it cost us to bring it back?
Yeah. What do you, what is your projected, because this was a projected savings pretty much, right?
Well, not only would it be the cost of the energy manager, you already know that, it would be, if we were to go with the same program, it's about 12,000 some dollars a month to, to get into a new contract with Energy Education, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Well, that's part of it.
Okay.
So, but, okay, if we have someone, say, we decided, okay, in a year, okay, Mr. Kidwell, would you come, I mean, but if he has all in his head, we wouldn't necessarily have to go back to the company. If he has all that knowledge, he should be able to just come in and enroll with it.
But I think there's a commitment in the contract with Energy Education that permits, or does not permit him to come back and work for the district after he's advertised based on Energy Education.
But we pay, we pay his salary, but is there a contract, is there a clause?
He has a contract with Energy Education.
That he can't go work for them, yeah.
Yes. He has a contract with Energy Education.
But we don't pay them anything right now.
We do not. I don't want to, yeah, that...
So if we let him go, he can't go work for Energy Education as a subcontractor?
He could go work at another district that implements Energy Education program, but not as a self-employed energy czar, if I'll call him that.
And he can't go around to other districts...
Sharing the information.
Teaching them how to use proprietary information.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Thank you. Talking about when we first brought Energy Services, or whatever their name is, into the district, their fee was based on actual saved dollars.
Their fee was a monthly fee, and on top of that, it was a saved, they took half...
It was 50%. That was the contract, was 50% of actual saved dollars.
Yes.
Not cap dollars.
It was cost avoidance dollars.
It was cost avoidance.
Cost avoidance dollars.
Because they always talk in terms of cost avoidance.
I know. That's what makes them look good.
Well, it's the most reliable figure that anybody could come up with. It's more than that.
I wish I could budget my house on cost avoidance dollars instead of actual dollars. I really wish I could.
Any other question? I have a question. We talk about the energy manager's position. Is it possible to do a layoff for that particular position and bring that person back? Or does that need to be a continual process? Because if there's a layoff, then there's quote-unquote, "on our side," no termination of that particular position. It's just, it's not being occupied, and so...
I'm going to refer that to...
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have the contract in front of me. The contract says the program must be continuous, so...
Okay.
If, once we stop it, then we go back to just being like a new school district, and they either, either Charlie comes back, or they train someone else, and then we're paying half the cost avoidance and, and the startup fees all over again.
Okay.
Plus the money that we've lost because we don't have the program operating.
Okay.
People are getting the impression our utility bills are going to go up half a million dollars a year if we vote to cut a position, and that is just a futile argument.
I guess, what would you base that on? We have data. What would you base that statement on, saying that they would...
Common sense.
Will you guarantee that they won't go up?
Can you guarantee they will?
Okay. Come on, stop this right now, and we're going to begin to take the questions from our general public. And this gentleman here has been waiting extremely patient. And as he's coming up, could you come up to the front, and then that way, we can get you on camera? And as he's coming up, Mr. Thieck, go ahead. Yes.
Yeah.
Right here, there's like, well, there used to be a little, there's a shadow of a box right here in between these two chairs. And Mr. Thieck...
It just seems to me that in four or five years that we've had him, we should, almost everything should be in place on our employees to, by mind habit or mind tricks or whatever we're calling it, and students, to already enroll these savings every day, every employee. It's just mind-boggling that, over four or five years of this guy in this position, that all our employees aren't trained, are ready to do all this stuff. I can't see every weekend, he comes up and snaps his fingers and says, "Hey, there's something new I'm going to teach you guys today." You know, it should be five years. I mean, it's great to be number five in the state, but if we don't have schools, big deal for a number five in energy, really. I don't understand that.
I think he's really good in documentation. My name is Fred Kacharsky. I live at 28736 Leroy, here in Romulus.
Right.
My job, actually, I work for a Fortune 25 company.
Okay.
And energy is a big part of my job. I'm a facility manager. Manage about 300,000 of data centers, square footage, raised floor. And what you're talking about here in energy, I would actually not worry about firing that company that's managing your energy, because it doesn't seem like they're doing it. Cost avoidance is not what you do. If he's saved a half a million dollars in energy every year since he's been here, he should be able to leave, and all that energy dollar should be continually saved, because your business management system should be programmed to turn off the air conditioning at specific times. You shouldn't need a person to go check to make sure that it's working. Your maintenance department should be in charge of this program. Detroit Edison, all the utilities out there have a lot of fine programs that can give rebates. I see, and here, I can't really tell, but I have visited my wife, and I know you're still running T-12 lamps in your facilities, which are a huge energy consumer. In five years, I can't understand, they would have paid themselves off in a year and a half, and you'd be saving tons of money right now. So turning lights off and reminding people, you can't change culture that easily, but you can make improvements where you don't even have to change culture, and I don't see this school district doing any of that. I think, spend the $27,000 and hire a new energy manager that can actually do a good job.
Yeah. We had some other people who were waiting. You could come up, please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on, Mr. Williams.
My name's Jay Williams. I just have a quick question on the Plan B budget. Unlike the food services, Sherry, on our expenses, if I'm understanding this right, 1.8?
Yes.
And you say most of that is our employees, but we only have four full-time employees in the kitchen. How much of that is, woo, 1.8? We're paying a lot for four cooks.
Part of that is food services. We are on contract now, we're...
Right.
...food, administrator team, and we have to...
Well, it was just a little misleading to say that most of it was our employees. I mean, we only had four full-time employees.
Eighty some of it, 80% of the work, the janitor, the general fund budget.
Right.
You can't assume, when I talk of general fund budget, I'm talking about food service. I didn't give you detail on...
Right, because food service has to be used in the food service and can't go into general.
So I just earmarked.
Okay. And the other question on the energy manager, and I guess Carl would probably have the info on this, is he licensed to touch our boilers? Does he have a boiler light? Because you know, in the state of Michigan, it's against the law to adjust anything on a boiler.
He doesn't, he doesn't touch our boilers.
Okay.
Yeah, he doesn't, he, he works with the controls. He doesn't fix boilers or repair them.
No, but I'm saying, even operating the controls in the state of Michigan, I can pull the book out, there, you're not supposed, only a boiler operator can make any adjustments or anything on our boilers in the state of Michigan.
If that's, if that's a rule, I would have to assume that he works through, you know, a licensed person in that regard.
That's why I'm asking.
But I don't, I don't know the answer directly.
And like, I know we were talking about, like, at the gyms or whatever, to tell them to turn it off sometimes, like Sherry said, maybe the custodian forgets or anything, but why don't we just make a checklist for the night custodian when there's things going on? That's what we do in our garage. We have a checklist on the wall, kind of like PM on a truck, before you take it out. You go through and check it out, sign your name, turn in your copy. I mean, that's just something...
All I'll say, and I don't want to be argumentative, but we had those types of systems in place before we contracted with Energy Education. We never attained these types of savings, so, you know, we can...
But I'm just saying, to continue the savings, I mean, it's just...
We can, we can do that.
It's no different than what we do. It's a checklist.
Right.
Before I go get in one of those commercial vehicles, I have to walk around, and that's required by the Department of Transportation. I have to turn that in before I even roll out of the yard with that truck. I mean, it's the same thing we could give our custodians. Here's your checklist, turn it into main office, and every, every day you'll have a copy of that and you can tell just exactly what that custodian turned off or turned on or set or whatever.
I hear you.
Ms. Dotson, and then Ms. Williams, did you have your hand up? Okay.
I'm Sandy Dotson. I have two children that have gone through the entire Romulus school system from kindergarten through 12th grade. My daughter will be a senior this year, hopefully in Romulus, possibly not, which will break my heart because she won't be living with me. If this bond doesn't go through or millage, whatever you're calling it, and $470,000 crosses out athletics, but won't $450,000 eliminate an emergency manager, you will lose more than just my daughter. Seniors apply for scholarships for sports. If there's no sport, she can't go to college because I don't have the money to send her. She's in two sports. She doesn't, unfortunately, she has like a C average, so she's not going to get it for grades. But she's a great sports person, bowling and softball. That's how my child's going to go to college. If Romulus does not have sports and can't even say that my kid is more important than an emergency manager, my child will not be going to Romulus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My first question. Our superintendent was hired in 2006. Was it, was it under the intentions that he was going to hold three positions? Anybody know?
Nope. I know.
I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the board.
That's fine.
You're not running this, not right now.
Thank you.
Now, I was on the board at the time when we hired Carl. We hired him for his expertise he had in curriculum and also for all the experience he had.
Human resources curriculum and superintendent?
Human resource and curriculum.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you hired him with the intentions that he was going to hold all three positions?
No, not at the time. We helped, we hired him for the expertise he had in those positions in case we got to the point where we had to have him run those positions.
Okay. Well... When you hired him, the contract was 133,000? The salary? Just his salary?
It was 1... You know what? I think it was 123. Carl, do you know what it was?
How is it nobody knows?
You know, I know.
Well, we don't have those numbers memorized.
I have the contract in front of me. Let me have it.
It was in the 120s.
The total compensation hasn't changed.
I'm saying base salary. Listen to what I said. Your base salary. And I'm talking to the board. You're not running the mic. I'm talking to the board, not you. You're an employee.
Hold on a second, one second. I want to speak.
Okay.
I know what I'm speaking about. Now, I do, I do know that there was, in lieu of a raise, he, his compensation, his base salary has not changed, but...
What I'm saying is what, what dollar amount was he hired in at? His, what was his salary?
You, you were hired in 2008, 2009.
2006.
That might be the adjusted. That's probably the adjusted ones there after we, you know, when they renewed it each year.
Yeah, it's the earliest one we got.
Yeah. This, this figure I have, isn't that correct?
It was approximately 125. Then there was a 12 and a half percent TSA, plus the school district reemb...
Okay, go ahead.
Plus the school district reimbursed him for his expenses under FICA. When the contract was renewed in, you know, I believe eight, nine, all those figures were rolled into a new base.
Right.
Which didn't increase his base compensation, but it did increase the district's costs with regard to MIPs.
Okay, so right now, well, I foreyed the information. And if I'm not mistaken, the four-year information that I received said 133. That was in 2006. In 2012, he's making 159 base salary, not all of his extras, just the base salary. Whereover the rainbow did this extra money come, you can give to Carl. Nothing personally against you, Carl, but you can't give to the citizens that work here as employees. You can't find money for them, but you can find money for Carl. And I'm talking to the board.
Do you want to answer a recess so I can advise the board?
Well, I think first off, you have...
You can't ask for a recess, David.
Okay, let me...
In all fairness...
We can get the information.
We didn't roll the board...
I know you wasn't on the board at that time.
But they didn't, all they did is put all those numbers into one new base salary. He doesn't get the TSA anymore.
Right.
Nor does he get reimbursed for FICA anymore. So, those numbers are gone.
Right.
So, what is his salary now?
Roughly, exactly. It's roughly 159. 158?
With no FICA?
157.
With no, what's, what's the total that we as taxpayers pay, Carl?
157,399,13.
That's correct.
157,399,13.
What is the total amount that comes out of our tax dollars to our superintendent?
That's it.
FICA?
157,399,13.
So, we don't pay FICA anymore? We're not paying for his health benefits? All of that's gone?
We pay our eight and a quarter percent FICA, not his, the employer's share. And we pay the same benefits, he has the same benefits that any other administrator in the district has.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What's the total of all his benefits?
I believe that's on the website, is it not, Sherri?
Well, that's...
The total is 200...
217,870.50? That's it. That's it. So, I don't understand. What bothers me, and I'm not trying to pick on the board, but how is it that we elect you to keep track of our money and nobody seems to know? And I'm not talking about the board that wasn't on the board when Carl got it. The board, please, you have to take more control. You hired Carl. He didn't hire the board. We elected you to tell him what's best to do for our district. The district is saying, "We don't trust him." He's getting more money than our governor? With what, little, he's running in every chamber, you ask him something he don't know? I mean, come on now, we got to do better than this.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. At first, just real quick, just in response, you talked about, you brought up the governor's salary. I looked at that. I, I, but I looked at it and you, you talk about the cumulative whole of a worth of an employee, but that's not what's included in the governor's salary. And I'm making reference to a piece of literature that I saw passed out in regards to what our governor made. And so, you, but wait a minute, letting, you had your time to talk, now it's my turn. All right, now, I'm not twisting, but if you're going to listen, you know, you wanted us to listen to you, now is your opportunity to listen to what we have to say. We taking turns. All right, so, you talk about the governor's salary, but what you did not include in the governor's salary was how much the taxpayers of Michigan used to house the governor and his family, how much we pay to feed him, how much we pay for his health benefits, how much we pay to get him to and from where he needs to go. So, and the, so, hey, I'm just, I'm just making it plain.
And don't say me, or you, you need to talk to person, actually put it out there. You act like you're so offensive about...
I'm not offensive, I'm just being informative right now because you're being accu, you're accusing us. Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams. Thank you for your comment. And again, like I said, you know, really, what this really is about, like you said, is can we afford? We've all, everybody has taken cuts. Everybody. And now it's gotten to the point to where it is really impacting our children. And that's what is at focus here right now. Anything, any diversion or, or smokescreen, it's about the kids. And so, you know, I don't know what to tell you. I don't know what to tell you. Yes.
I would like to just say accidents happen every day. And if he's not here to manage those computers, how long does it take us to get somebody trained? Somebody should be a backup, a support if, if he don't come home tonight. Somebody, there's a, somebody's got to have a backup. May they never have to use it, but at least have somebody trained. If he's in a hospital for three months, that's three months of energy that you guys are talking about that we're going to lose. Somebody should have a backup plan, may they never have to use it, but somebody should be trained on that computer like...
It's covered in our contract.
You said it's covered?
Yeah, contingencies like that are part of the contract. They'll provide additional support if we need it to get us over, you know, a certain critical period of time if our energy manager isn't available to work or is unable.
Mr. Chikowski. Um, Mr. McLaughlin.
Those of you that know me know how hard it is for me to sit here and keep my mouth shut. We are spending an hour talking about a $24,000 position...
Employee. And we still haven't adapted.
...when we destroyed our transportation and athletics for this district. This garbage has to stop. The board voted May 14. That vote still stands unless this vote, this board tonight reverses that. And I will caution everyone.
Thank you.
In the last weekly update, matter of fact, on the YouTube video and the DVD that the administration kindly provided, thank you, Anna, for having me come pick it up, clearly says, "All the board has to do to quote, 'negate the erroneous motion' is to vote on the budget tonight." So, either A or B.
Is that...
You're not cutting it, administrator. You're not cutting. They're not specifically lined out in here. I will guarantee you they won't happen. I'm done.
Okay, I guess I've got the month.
Yes, you do.
Don't mind if I stay?
Hot potato.
You can, that's fine.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I've lived in the community 38 years.
Thank you.
My daughter graduated a number of years back from Romulus High. She received an excellent education. She went on to work at Oakwood and be trained in radiology. She is now working for the Veterans Administration in Charleston. I have stepped forth in my community. I'm, I was in the field of education for 38 years, 17 of it as a director of media and technology. I am now a dinosaur. I can't set so many things I call my grandkids in. But anyway, I stepped forward when the well was attempting to be put in. My name never appeared. I worked with Dr. Vadel in passing the huge bond issue from years ago. My name never appeared. I worked on doing two videos on the rack. I will step forth in any manner that I can to pass the monies that is necessary to continue good education for our children. The just, the city is now working on a five-day, five-year projected plan. I have started getting some facts and figures from City Hall and et cetera that in the past three years, the industrial decline of the SEV has gone down 31%. That's over three years. The commercial has gone down 34%. Our residential has gone down 45%. This is no fault of yours, but we are in a tough money situation. I know it's mandatory that you make these necessary cuts. I hope it doesn't happen. I would like to ask, and you answer at the end of my presentation here, do you have a projected plan for three or five years? With our declining enrollment, 200 last year, 200 this year, or the future, and the grant funding bouncing around about 9,000 per pupil, that's 1.8 million dollars. That's a whole lot of money. I walked into the middle school meeting over there a few weeks back and I thought, "I helped build this." I found out that there was an election, and I'm a very positive voter, I never voted no, because I got my absentee ballot on an election. The form was put up there that, on the screen, and it said, "We only lost by 200 votes." Close only counts in horseshoes and hand grenades.
Exactly.
We've gone through about five elections and we've lost. I see the community becoming actively involved. One of the major concerns that I have is a lack of communication that is going out to the general populace. If we look at the circle of the target, we at one time had a huge, a larger student population with more parents that were going to be actively involved, concerned about their children. That is shrinking continuously. The next ring is the populace at large. There is no communication going out to them. Our television, the channel, there's nothing on it of importance. I would like to see marketing coming in for this community. I would like to see the youngsters graduating. I would like to see the accolades that are put on. I was in education, Blue Ribbon Committee exemplary. I don't even know what that means. I was, worked a lot in image-making and marketing. This election is, as I analyzed this, I thought, that was passed over very rapidly. I took that and went to the City Hall and put it into a, a map like this that told me what percentage of yes I can recognize very rapidly. I gave this to Tom, I gave it to Carl. That is key to this future, the future of our district. I recognize that there are negatives out there. These negatives are negative people. I know we don't have them in Romulus. We sure as hell had them in Taylor. And that's where I was for 36 years. They're negative people and negative at home. They attract, surprisingly, other negatives. They are infringing on our children's education. They are infringing on our city government. They are not giving our kids a fair break. These are the leaders, these are the workers, these are the people that are defending us in the foreign countries. This election coming up on August 7th will be a little bit different. It has a primary in there. I've, again, gone back to City Hall, I know what the primaries hold. I, I see because of lack of communication and lack of leadership and information being disseminated, there is a grassroots that is merging. It should be the other way around, from the top to cultivate the grassroots. The grassroots people are saying, "Hey, we want our sports. Hey, we want transportation." I noticed there was a communication given out by Wood. I don't know any of you up here, but...
Mr. Woods.
Who's Wood? Athletic Director? And it said, "You know, we want to recruit people to help us." I heard by way of the grapevine that at the VFW, there were two people, two employees of the district, believe very much in children in this district, that they were going to go there because the children were enrolling for football last year, or next year. I thought, gee, that needs a little bit of organizational structure. I drew up very rapidly a form. I said, "Don't just put their name down. I want to know where they live, what precinct they're in, how many registered voters there are." Every one of them said, "Yes, call me on that day." And I don't mean robo-calling. Get these people actively involved. They're the basic grassroots that you have here. Would you make sure that this copy gets to the right person? As I looked through and see, I call it almost the little paper, that's an afterthought paper. Oh, there it is, I think I'll pick it up. I saw some youngsters' pictures in there. Taylor's picture, or paper was the next week. They are marketing the heck out of us. I just wonder why the link was discontinued, the major link. When I talked at City Hall, they said that Board of Education or the administration did not want to fund this communication anymore.
We couldn't, yeah. It was mutual.
Okay, I...
It was a mutual decision between the city and the school district.
Boy, that was a dumb move. That's all I can say.
Yeah, we...
This was one of the major ones. So, we are being out-marketed. I do know that this is on the back of my car. That's grassroots, I assume. I don't know who, but I'm a moving billboard. We are getting our brains beat out by the charter schools. They, I do not know that, I've never been in a charter school, I do not know the results of the charter schools, what they're getting, what they're producing. But I do know that they're out-marketing us. I've noticed this little article in the paper here about Plymouth. It says, "More than 900 applications have already been received for 300 student placements." Don't know if that's true, but it's a heck of a marketing thing. Hey, I've talked too long. I hope I haven't bored you, but I will help you in any way I can.
Thank you. Okay, um, real quick, just to kind of get back to what Mr. McLaughlin talked about because I really feel like we have not addressed the meat and potatoes of this budget plan. And I think the, definitely one of the point of contention was the administrative position and the administrative assistant position that we were talking about and how that would, not so much how, because the board members did have an opportunity, if they were not present at the meeting, then they were given DVDs to go... If they were not present at the meeting, then they were given DVDs to go over that study session that we talked about. So, if we could kind of venture our way over to that discussion in regards to the administrative assist, the administrative assistant position and the administrator.
Well, at the study session, I don't recall anybody, any of the board members saying not to include them positions on the budget. I don't recall them saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't recall anybody saying not to include them. And the motion was six to one to include them positions in the budget. And based on the information, the question I asked, central office administrator's not on there. Basically, it's not what the board directed the administration to do, no matter what plan you go with.
Well, they are included on the Plan B.
I just asked, I just asked Mr. Posiglue.
Yeah, that's what he was trying to clear up was.
She said, "The central office administrator was not included in Plan B, correct?"
Let's take a look at Plan B.
That's what, that's the question I specifically asked.
There is a reduction of expenditures in Plan B for the office support person. I think you heard me right.
Right.
The administrative position still exists in Plan B.
Correct.
As far as I understand, you've been updated a little bit about what's going on in terms of a possible, I don't want to call it a solution.
Is everybody looking at Plan B?
Yeah.
If you look at Plan B and you go down to the third line from the bottom, it says, eliminate board office administrator, estimated savings $100,000. It's in your board packet. It's right on the back of the budget spreadsheet that says Plan B deficit. The position is clearly on there. This Plan B is what the board approved to the best of our ability. Now, what it also says on there, if you look over to the third column.
Hold that one. I was looking at.
Yeah, don't look at A, look at B. Go one more page.
B's right here.
Does it say Plan B at the top?
Right. But I was looking at these columns.
Okay, no. Yeah, it's hard to find it there. Plan B says $100,000. All right. What we did, and this was made clear in my weekly update to the board, we prepared dual, dual plans. We prepared a Plan A, which is our administrative recommendation, based on our expertise and the information that we presented to the board on June 11th, as far as managing the day-to-day operations of the district. Plan B was a plan, our best guess to address the amended motion that was approved on May 14th. Again, it says very clearly in the third column after that $100,000 figure, the first, it says no and then slash yes. No means if the hold harmless is approved. In other words, if the millage passes, our recommendation would be no. If not approved, yes. All right? But there are some extenuating circumstances related to that in terms of what position and our ability to oversee. For instance, you know, there was talk about merging maintenance and transportation. There was talk, we talked, we already spoke with you and I gave you some information on the network administrator position, which we're still kind of working out, but we see some serious savings there and we think that we have a pretty good chance at managing things. However, I will tell you, you know, in response to Mr. Rivard's comments, that means it isn't going to be like it used to be in terms of our website is pretty robust now. It's not perfect, but it's, I think about what it was six years ago, where nobody in the district knew how to take things off of there, nobody knew how to put things on there, and it was, it was a mess. Again, we think we can do that. There is no way in the world that we can manage a transportation department and a maintenance and custodian department without supervisors. All right? And as I explained to the board several times last year and also this year, and as the board agreed to last year, it's just not a doable job to merge those positions based on the offerings that we have right now. One of the things that the board can do is they can eliminate all transportation after the election in August. If they decide to do that, that would mean that they don't provide special ed transportation either, which is required by law, which means that the board would have to do something to, to provide that transportation. If that's no longer our responsibility, we would no longer need that position. All right? That's one scenario. But again, making those levels of detail is premature right now, and we, we don't know what the outcome of that millage is going to be. So, those were the things that we explained on June 11th. The other thing that I want to make sure that I remind the board of is there were liabilities to the board in terms of laying off employees. And we strongly recommend through Plan A that we don't lay off any additional transportation employees until after that election, because we would be required then to pay unemployment for the summer based on that amended motion and the contents of that amended motion on May 14th that the board approved. We'd be required to pay transportation. We would also be required to eliminate their benefits as of July 1st. We don't think that that's necessary. We don't think that's the right thing to do, which again, the board's job is to set the parameters. Our job is to manage the day-to-day. We would be remiss, not insubordinate, we would be remiss if we didn't advise the board based on what we know, running the day-to-day operations in the district. And that's the basis behind Plan A. It's certainly the choice of the board, not the superintendent, on what they approve.
Um, can I ask one?
Yes.
Ms. Buckley?
So, Plan A is effective, what they, Plan B is effective, what they?
Plan A would be effective once you approve the budget, if you approve Plan A. So, it would take effect July 1. Plan B, same, same answer. What we suggest is that the board hold off on the elimination of those transportation positions until after we know the answer to the big question in August. And that we amend the budget at that time. And at that time, you could amend the budget and you would have more clarity on the outcomes of those other positions that you're talking about.
Mr. McLaughlin. I'm sorry, did you have another question?
I'm confused, because I got, it's eliminate transportation, no one, yes, I'm both. So, I guess I'm confused, what's the difference?
I think, I'm the same way. Plan A, it just says eliminate energy manager, admin assistant, and board office administrator. They're striked with a line.
Right.
So, it looks like the, the top six are staying on Plan A.
That's correct.
On Plan B.
They're in there.
They're in there. That's correct. Plan B is basically the motion that the board approved on May 14th.
I'm looking at the timing. So, if we're, if they're, we're talking about, you're saying about transportation. I'm looking at the timing. They're both on both A, Plan B and Plan B. So, what makes Plan B better?
Better or different?
Than Plan A as far as transportation is concerned, as far as us?
Plan A, the board is not laying off those employees right now. The board is waiting until after the election.
So, that's in Plan A or Plan B?
And that's the way, and that's the way you budgeted, right, Cherry?
That's what we're asking about. That's what I'm trying to.
Right.
Because the budget that you would approve tonight also includes the passage of hold harmless. If you find out on August 7th that evening that we did not, the millage was not approved, you come back to, the board would come back and adopt a new budget, a revised budget that at that time would eliminate those services.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand, because what I, what I was hearing from Carl was that he was saying that if we didn't Plan B, we'd have to lay off right now, but they're both on here. I just needed to understand the timing. It doesn't make any difference, Plan A or B, we could still wait until the elections before we do the layoffs.
What about reasonable assurance?
Is that, is that correct?
That's the way I'm reading it, too.
Yeah.
Because I don't get it.
I still get it.
I have a question, because it just was brought to my attention. Okay, with the elimination of transportation, okay, my understanding was that there would still be special ed buses that would have to be out on the road. Now, from what I just got from what Mr. Weiss said, was that if you eliminate transportation and you have to still provide the special services, okay, that they're going to have to look at a way for you guys to get those provided. Now, Local 64 is contracted to do those special services. So, what, precisely, Mr. Weiss, did you mean about that?
What I meant was our recommendation was just that, that we don't make that decision until after the election, and that's as we discussed previously, which would be eliminate general ed, transportation, if the board, if the millage doesn't pass. However, if the board wants to eliminate an administrative position, you can't have transportation without a transportation supervisor. So, if the board really wants to eliminate that position, and there were some members of the board that were advocating for a merger of two positions, which again, we cannot see our way clear to doing that and manage the district.
What's been working so far? Can I ask you, could you explain to all of us how transportation, because you know, love Betty to death, but Betty's been off for almost two years.
Right now, we have.
You would explain to me, because I would like to know how that system that you have implemented for the last two years has been working.
Right now, it works very well. We have a temporary person who is in a position, filling in, who is accumulating overtime and is fairly compensated, and that position is managing. All right? It's not my understanding that the board's directive on May 14th was to continue that position. Our understanding was the board wants.
But that could be an alternative, correct?
Well, again, it hasn't even been discussed.
Exactly. So, that would have been something I would have discussed with my board. Sorry about that.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for using the floor.
Again, I've heard a lot of comment, both on the DVD, when I watched it on YouTube, and the dozens of emails that I've received, that the amended motion caused the date with transportation or athletics. The only, that is the administration's motion I read May 14th. I added the three positions. None of the wording was changed. And I'm telling you, Madam Chairman, I'm sick and tired of listening to this administration trying to paint me in a box, saying, "I introduced this god-awful amendment that caused a deficit." We need to get Dave from Romulus Hardware down here with some shovels. It's getting pretty deep. I absolutely recall the week of that meeting, being told by the superintendent, Local 64 had agreed to a late layoff notification because of this crisis.
You know what was suggested?
Okay. I stand, my information, my understanding is that's what we were told. My point being, there needs to be, and this I put on the administration, that's your responsibility. We're in a crisis, get an LOU from the union saying, hello, we're trying to give you reasonable assurance, but if we give you reasonable assurance and make this budget cut, then we're cutting everybody off at the knees. But I resent darts being thrown at this board, saying, "We created the deficit." No, we didn't. This district's been in deficit for five years. And I'm sick and tired of it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to be clear on the correction directive. That is paid by our grant at the middle school, so that's why we went with the Quikken Director, to make sure they oversee the $5 million grant that we got.
Part of it.
Right.
And as far as, if I could clarify, as far as laying off the employees, we were advised by our attorney that that would put us in jeopardy, that motion, whether part of it came, part of it came from us. We did prepare that motion. It was on direction of the board. They have a motion ready, because several board members said that if the, if the millage failed on May 8th, our meeting on May 9th, we must lay off. And so, we had that motion prepared. Again, our job is to advise you of the consequences, and that's what we're doing. It's not pleasant.
Okay, I just want to ask one other, other thing we didn't talk about, and maybe you did when I went to the restroom, but administrative assistant, what specifically, what, is it just any administrative assistant?
It wasn't specific.
Yeah, we were not given any direction. And so, what we explored was whether that was a union position or a non-union position. And we're working through some possibilities with that, and I know it sounds like we're just kind of beating around the bush. But again, I just want to talk about our credibility. You know, we've managed this district for six years, and we've been able to get the savings that the board asked us to get every single year. We've negotiated, we've renegotiated contracts, we've opened up contracts with most of our associations, and we've gotten the savings that you've asked for. All right? So, I think our credibility is pretty good. Right now, we don't have a good scenario to reduce an administrative assistant right now that doesn't lead to chaos. All right? Chaos means we jeopardize some of our federal funding. Chaos means we have programs that aren't supervised. Chaos means we spend money we don't have. All right? Right now, we're pretty tightly organized. We've reduced over 10 positions at the board office in the last five years, including administrative and support staff, and we feel that we're down to bare bones. Now, this is summer. We may have some retirements coming in. We do every summer. All right? All we're asking for is latitude, a little bit of time for us, so that we can honor our commitments, so that we can explore this, just like I asked for it on administration. We've come up with a way to save some money on the administrative. All right? Give us a little time. There's no need to make that decision right now, when we don't know the answer to the question.
We got to vote on a budget tonight, right?
We have to vote on a budget tonight.
Yes, you do. So, we got to make up our minds.
But you have to decide whether it's Plan A or Plan B. If Plan A gives us time to work through those details.
Okay, just one other question. I'm sorry, I just got a lot of questions.
No, that's fine.
But, okay, if the hold harmless is not approved, I know I'm soft-spoken, sorry. But my, this doesn't work, so I'll try to be louder. I'm just soft-spoken. I'm sorry.
Mike's right.
Hopefully, don't interfere with myself.
There you go. You're right.
My, my mic doesn't work. I'm sorry, and I'm kind of soft-spoken. But if the hold harmless is not approved, we have to eliminate those positions anyway. So, we would have to have a plan, right? So, I guess we would have to end up doing it anyway if we don't get the hold, if we don't get the millage passed. So, I guess I'm asking, what's the difference? You understand?
Yeah. I, I.
The $364,000 question.
I see what Rob is saying is Plan A should have still included elimination of those three items.
I understand what he's saying.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get it right.
I don't care if we call it Plan F.
I can make the right decision.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Cooter.
You know, in, in the several years we're doing this, and we've been doing budget cuts for several years, and some of us have had to deal with every one of them. None of them are happy, no matter what. One thing that always comes to my mind on these budget cuts, that has always come from administration, is you have to stick to a plan and go with it. You can always add things back on if everything's good. So, I think we should go with Plan B. If things pass, then we can address it from there. But we got to imagine the worst-case scenario. We've already got reasonable insurance or an agreement. I'm not sure what terminology we want to use from the transportation, so they understand what the situation is.
I don't have reasonable insurance.
Well, let's ask. She's right here.
Madam Chair? Based on what our attorney says.
Okay. Tom, you said go with A or B?
We cannot, we cannot pass a budget that assumes that the millage fails, which is your 5.1 million or your 5.3 million dollars in cuts. And in other words, you can't pass a budget that assumes the millage fails and tell those transportation workers that they have reasonable assurance. Now, what I'm confused about was the comment that Cherry made a few minutes ago. Maybe I'm mistaken on that. On, on the budget. Does the budget assume, your, your spreadsheets now, are your, your spreadsheet for Plan Did you take transportation out, the two?
Transportation is still in the business.
Okay.
For Plan A and Plan B.
The only difference between A and B is the reduction, elimination of the energy manager.
Cost of savings.
Plus the cost that we expect the increase to go.
So, maybe I'm mistaken in it. Rebecca, if transportation is in there, then we can give those employees reasonable assurance.
We can provide.
Okay. Then I stand corrected.
Transportation is involved. That's what I was trying to understand. I couldn't get it.
All right. Okay, because I had, I saw three people, Ms. Dotson, Mr. Williams, and I don't know your names, so, okay. So, could you give them the microphone, please? Thank you.
Oh, I'm loud, Danielle, you know they.
Well, you know what? When we're taping, though, they, the people at home can't hear what's actually being talked about unless you're talking into the microphone. Okay.
The $470,000 that's attributed to the athletics, does that include the salary of the athletic director and all of the coaches?
Yes.
That includes all of the expenditures. The expenditures are actually a little over, almost 500,000, but we do take in gate receipts. But the net effect of what we take in for athletic events minus the, but most of that goes towards a student activity account where it's used for a specific purpose. If you're raising money for football, it goes to football. If you're raising money for baseball, it goes to baseball. These funds are just general athletic. Tennis may not have the opportunity, or the number, bowling is, is an example. Well, not as many students participate, so it's very difficult for them to raise the amount of money that a football team or a baseball team or someone of that nature would. team or a baseball team or someone of that nature would.
It depends on how athletic director-
But to answer your question, it includes the entire department.
Okay, Ms. Swain had a question. I'm sorry, we're putting you to work, Cherry.
Okay. I'm just really troubled with these budgets, because I used to do accounting before I became disabled. And never could I do a budget based on, if I get the money in three months. I always did a actual, a forecasted, and a most likely. Okay. We're putting all of our eggs in one basket here, hoping that the millage passes in August. And Mr. Weiss just touched on something that sparked me to stand up. Credibility. We have none. This board has none, and the superintendent does not have any. And that is the problem. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm voting yes on this millage. I've raised four kids in this community, three I've sent through the school system, and my youngest graduates in two years. I will vote, even if it raise my taxes, because these are our kids. Anything else that raises my taxes is going to get a no vote, especially if it's done on this level, where nobody is accountable. I, this is all smoke and mirrors tonight. This, to me, is smoke and mirrors, because this is not, as of right now, the money we're going to have this fall. This is just paper. This is not the money we're going to have. I've got a son right now on the football field, practicing football, not knowing if he's going to be able to do it next week. And this happens to be the year he makes varsity. I've always been an involved parent. Ms. Peck can attest to that. But I've, I put politics aside when I got out of Little League. But I became involved again when this millage didn't pass. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't vote the night of the millage, but that's because I was ill. I wasn't able to. I would've voted yes. I'm voting yes in August. But the biggest problem with all the people that I'm talking to, that I'm trying to get to the polls to vote, is the fact, yeah, they say they're cutting sports, they say they're cutting transportation, but they're not going to. It's a scare tactic. At each meeting I've been to since then, that's what I'm getting. So, now I understand those people. I understand the points of view, especially the ones that don't have kids in this community or in the schools. I'm voting yes either way. You can raise my taxes double until I get my kid out of school, then I'm leaving. Then I'm leaving, okay? Because this is our kids. This is the kids. But it's meetings like this, misinformation, paperwork like this, where you're projecting dollars that you don't have. If I learned anything in this recession, it's to live within my means. You go with what you have. If I could tell my mortgage company, "Hey, I don't have it now, but I'll probably have it in six months. Can you wait till then?" Well, I'd be foreclosed. So, until you stand up and really do your job financial-wise and work with what you have, you are not going to have the respect, you are not going to have the vote of this community.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. To kind of address a couple of the things that you talked about, as far as the approving our budget, we don't get our money from the state until October. And so, really, when we approve our June 30th budget, it's a projected budget anyway, but we're required by law to have it approved by June 30th. And so, anything since I've been on this board, having to approve that budget, we're estimating what we are going to be getting in the fall as far as the projected money that's coming in to us. So, that's why we have those amendments on the budget, so that we can, you know, adjust to what the actual dollars are that we're receiving in the district. You talked about it being important for, you know, having sports and your son practicing. And so, it is our hopes that the budget does pass, but there are also some unforeseen, what they call unforeseen circumstances, in regards to how we treat our employees up until that process. One of them being is with our bus drivers, it's a matter of their health benefits and unemployment. So, do we give them their layoff notices now, and then they collect unemployment over the summer? But that also impacts them, because they don't get any medical insurance any longer. They have to pay into a Cobra. The other thing is, and in regards to how much it would cost us, so to kind of make it a shorter story, financially, it's better for us to give them that assurance with the understanding that the definite decision is made once that election takes place, and have them keep their benefits in place. Or do they collect unemployment, which costs us more money. So, technically, we are saving money to keep them insured with benefits over the summer until we find out where we are going to be for the starting school year. So, you know, do you have a black and white, where there's no gray area? Unfortunately, we don't, because it's almost like everything is connected to everything else as far as the decisions that we have to make. I do understand that credibility is and has been an issue. But, you know, since I've been on the board, I think that we've done a good job of being diligent on what those, what our fiduciary responsibilities have been. You know, of course, everyone probably doesn't share that opinion. But I think that we work pretty hard to make sure that we are meeting our budgeted, but also to take into consideration, how does that impact the kids? How does that impact our staff? How does that impact our taxpayers? And having to be able to harmoniously balance all three. And so, yes, we definitely have a great task. Sometimes, it's one of those tasks that is too cringing, because you have to make decisions that impact people, that we have to probably put them out of work, because we can't pay them. And so, you know, I understand your frustration, but believe that ours is magnified 10 times on what that frustration is, because we're the ones that are making the decisions. It falls on our backs to have to make those types of decisions. So, we have to approve this budget on June, by June 30th. The task is, what we still have not talked about, which I'm about to ask the question now, is how does the vacancy of the technology director impact Plan A and Plan B? Because now, we are answering one of the directions that was given of leaving or either condensing or eliminating a director slash administrator, whatever you want to call them. We kind of go back and forth on what those titles are, so we're not wordsmithing right now. We're talking about an actual position.
So, to answer your question in terms of what does it do to Plan B?
Yes.
It would reduce the expenditures, which will give us more infundalance, because that has not been accounted for at this time, due to the fact that we were working through the organization to plan out how we would have those services conducted for the district with the elimination of a person that's called the network administrator.
So, you're talking about the fees that it would cost to outsource that particular-
Correct. There would be fees associated. So, to give you a true reflection on what you say right now, I can't do that. Again, we're working really hard with the organization that we're looking to partner with, in terms of what the cost will be, but we do not know that yet.
Okay.
And I just, you know, just again, the budget, if you decided, and I'm not suggesting this at all, if you decided on July 1st you wanted to change it, you have the liberty to change the budget as much as you'd like throughout the year. It's a nightmare for me. All I'm saying is, is that we have four days to pass the budget.
Right.
The budget can be amended at any time, which we've been talking about, especially after the millage. That is key at this point.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Mr. McGlocklin.
Thank you. Speaking specifically about the technology administrator, Rebecca, I don't know if you can answer this right now or not, and I know a good portion of my statement is my gut, my intuition, my opinion. But we have staff that I know for fact have picked up the slack in that area, or had things delegated to them by this director. Could they not absorb these duties, even if it meant a change in a job description and perhaps an adjustment?
Well, without going into too much detail, again, we don't-
Yeah, I don't want to bargain.
Right, right, right. Because we are still working with a vendor on, we've kind of broken that position down, and the point that you made is that, you know, many of our remaining staff, our technical staff, they have absorbed, and they are high technical skills. If we didn't have that staff kind of called and created throughout the last few years, we wouldn't even be able to have these conversations outside of, we would need to continue on business as usual, continuing to pay that. There are some things, though, that we were able to kind of separate out, and some of those are real, what I call super tech side, the super tech side of things. Those are, those are the uber high-tech areas, servers, managing, making sure that all of your servers, your switches, your blades, so many things that I don't even, acronyms that I don't understand what they mean.
Yeah, and you lost me at Uber.
Exactly. So, those are the things that we're kind of separating out at this point in these conversations that we're having. And because we have such a great tech staff on staff, we're able to have those conversations.
Well, and perhaps, I mean, that would lead to greater, I don't really want to go there, but maybe greater job security for those staff, giving them greater responsibility.
And it's always, from a human resource perspective, it's always our goal to grow from within. You know, that's always.
The only other statement that I would make pertinent to this particular position being cut, Madam Chairman, is the motion was specific, and I mean, you know, I think I've shared with you before, my rationale for actually gesturing and saying, "From this building," is because of the salary level and the benefits package and things of that nature, which gets us up to a dollar savings that's a little bit higher than this particular employee's salary. So, that's where I was going with that.
Okay.
But, you know, as I said in my emails, and you know, it's no secret to anybody, to the technicality of it, you know, am I going to beat a drum because we're going with this administrative cut over that? No. But the other two are still, you know, they're out there. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm, just for the sake of time, because it's A15, and we are still on item D. I am going to take Mr. Williams' comment and any additional comments, and then we are going to take a vote.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question while-
While he's coming up. Thank you. Go ahead.
Is there a way we can, because I was on the same wavelength, speaking about if we're getting rid of our technology that would take an administrative position, so is there a way we can do something with that, so that stays in and the other two come out?
Say that again?
You know what I'm saying?
Okay. We're talking about, we are getting rid of a administrative position. We have
that on here-
Right.
As a note, I guess, and yes, even if the note is passed. So, is there a way to be, since we are eliminating a position, keep that on there, and the other two will still be part of that motion, if we go with Plan B?
Well, it depends on how we work the motion. Well, actually, actually, we have to, we have to, if we want to, if we want to reverse that, we have to come to you for approval anyway, so it could be done, you know, if for some reason the board decides to change this a little bit, it would either be an amended amendment to the budget or just approval of position, so.
I got it. I got it. Okay. I got it. I'm there.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
I'm going to backtrack a little. I forgot to ask earlier when I was up here, and I apologize. I sit down. I know we're talking about saving money. I guess one of my questions is, I know for the past two or three years, and I know we're doing it at the board office again now, moving it around, whatever, how come we're not working our people 410s and closing up some buildings on Friday? And why are we having the high school, the only one working afternoon, sucking up energy? Aren't we kind of sabotaging ourselves by spending out this money?
Yep.
I'm just curious about that, because I know for the past two or three years, we've had our people working 410s, and this year, they're working five days, and I know our maintenance manager is rotating 410. It's kind of odd to me.
Would you like, would the board like to answer that?
Yes, please.
410s is a-
You know, four days a week, 10 hours a day, yet we're not doing-
410s is a negotiated item with a collective bargain agreement. We were working on that.
My response to that, Rebecca, would be this. I understand it's collective, and they have to bargain their times, yet we changed their times anyways, and we didn't bargain with them to change them the way we're working them now.
Yeah. We're apples and oranges at this point. There's-
That's not apples and oranges. We changed their time regardless, which we just took upon ourselves to do. So, why wouldn't we just go ahead and do it, and do them 410s, and let's save some money in this energy? That way, we're not sabotaging ourselves with this $350,000. We changed their times anyways, without bargaining it. That's interesting to me. So, to say that it's negotiated, and we've already done it, that's-
Yeah, I mean, if you haven't asked, you know, at this point, we've well passed over the bridge, so you may as well just go on and take it there.
Okay. So, in negotiations, you know, we've identified what is, what is a mandatory subject and what is not, and you've described a couple of scenarios there. And it's our determination, along with the support of our legal staff, that the 410s is definitely a change in working conditions. We do have to bargain that. The changes to the summer work hours is not, we're not changing their working conditions. We're not changing the identified items in their contract. And I know that's not what you want to hear, Jay.
No, no, that's fine. I'm asking too.
But, but, I honestly say, if, if that was-
If we have people working days at the high school, why are they suddenly working nights now? And if we have people working afternoons, why are they suddenly working days now? And that, you go too far into that. You and I both know, again, we're talking about saving money, and I've already called a couple of board members. I know because of that, we have lawsuit pending, which puts us in more legal fees and we're spending money. I don't under, you're asking for a millage, but I see as wasting money. I don't get it. I'm just asking. That's just common sense stuff there. I'm not a smart guy, but that's-
No, I think you're very smart, Jay.
That's just common sense stuff right there, you know. But I mean, I know you can't go any further than that, but I'm just curious about that, why we're doing it here, but we've got our people out there five days a week, let's shut these buildings down. We talked about turning off the AC or turning it down, whatever, you know, from Friday to, okay, that's three days, that's all.
I think both sides worked very hard to come to that agreement, and it just didn't work out for us this year.
Wasn't about you, sorry.
Yeah, I know, but I could answer that one too. After talking, I just know there wasn't, they asked for a letter of attachment, and they didn't get it as far as the hour change, and that's why they kind of-
Again, that's at the bargaining table.
You can say to her, "No, I can call her up here, Carl, if I need to."
Again, that's information, that's bargaining.
Well, but don't sit up there and try to make me a fool and go like this, because that makes me very angry as a taxpayer. And understand this, I am the taxpayer. So, show me the respect. I'm not sitting here doing you like this. Show me the respect that I deserve. And that's pissing me off. Board, bringing it to you. That pissed me off. Probably shouldn't say that on TV. Excuse me, I apologize to the kids. But we ran into that little problem before, and I can see we still haven't dealt with it. So, I leave that in y'all's hands.
Did we happen to send anything home with any of the students before the year was out? We had like three, four weeks. Did anything become of it?
There was stuff that did go out for the election through some of the schools, yes.
And it was just notification of when the election was going to be, that we were going-
Did you follow the one coming up?
No, the one coming up for-
August 7.
So, it was involved about the one that went by.
I have a kid in the school, so I just want to speak here.
We got the other man there.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go sticking to the plan, but I'm going to let you go, because you're one of our youngsters, so, how you doing?
Good. How are you? Jesse McGrane, I have a question about the property sales. You're talking about making a budget where you're expecting the taxpayers to give you a millage. Isn't there an uncertainty, are we going to sell the property? Is it not going to sell? It's $2.4 million. You can't assume you're going to get a vote but sell a piece of property, and they're in both budgets, if I'm right. What's your plan if you don't sell all this property?
Yep, I'll let Cherry.
It goes back to Mr. Fundenberg's comment earlier, that there's a lot of predictions in the budget. Now, let me tell you that last year, we also had the sale of property in our budget. Fortunately, we had some favorable events that occurred throughout the year where we were- were not necessarily reliant on the, the sale of property, so again-
Was it $2.4 million worth?
Last year?
Yeah.
No, because we added a property to it.
Okay.
It was about 1.92 million, we added a property since then.
Does anybody have any idea, get the millage, but you don't sell the property? It's in both budgets, you're planning on it. It's just a big of uncertainty.
Just like we're planning on the hold harmless, so I, again, and, but that, I guess that's what I was saying earlier, is that as a board, we have the opportunity to amend so that we can make that financial adjustment to what that's gonna be.
And let me just add to that, you know, part of the school budget business, and I know someone addressed our lack of credibility, but we're required to pass a budget before we even know what our state aid is.
Right.
The government, the governor has not signed a state aid bill, legislature broke for summer recess without approving state aid, so we have to operate on assumptions.
Right.
And, and our job is to recommend assumptions that we think have a likelihood, but it's not a certainty, just as Sherry mentioned, we, we had some sale of property in our budget last year, because basically, you know, we're on a plane that's declining in altitude and we've thrown out all the stuff we can throw out to lighten the load.
We got one parachute left.
And, you know, yeah, we got the pilot and, and, you know, we got the fuel tank, you know, that keeps the plane going, that's pretty much it, so that's kind of our reality right now and, and we're not alone, it's miraculous that we aren't already a deficit district, because, you know, a number of our neighboring districts are and we've been fighting off that, you know, inevitability in weathering those budget cuts for the last five years, but eventually, if things don't change, that's what's going to happen, so if we don't sell the property, the short answer to the question is we go into deficit and we file a deficit elimination plan, which I promise you will include sale of the property, because there isn't anything else.
But, I mean, you're talking about state aid, that it's not guaranteed, but you're gonna get something.
But we don't know what.
Yet you put 2.4 million in a budget and you might not get anything.
But did-
I mean, I don't see how I can make a budget home like everybody's talking about with, you know, a couple bucks that, oh wait, I don't have that.
Right, and, and that's, unfortunately, that's one of those things that the state, that's the position that they've put us in, I mean.
But was there ever a budget that the board got that didn't have sale of property to see what happens if it doesn't sell?
Yeah.
It's February and there was projections.
Yeah.
Okay, and did it include that the hold harmless wouldn't pass as well?
There was two scenarios at that point. One presented not having a property sale in it and then there were, the second would have been if we did not have the hold harmless, it would just be part of the revenue.
So, there's something somewhere in this building that has some kind of a plan if both of these don't happen.
It's a lot more, that's pretty simple, but it's a lot more simple than that, we did it in February and there were really projections, but yes.
Okay, all right, I need a motion.
Where we at now?
Madam Chairman?
Are we for the budget?
On D.
D.
Ready?
Yes.
All right, you want, you gonna do the motion?
I was going to, unless you want to.
I can. Everybody ready?
You have the floor, Carl.
All right. Move the Board of Education to accept the recommendation of the Director of Business and Operations to adopt the revised 2011, 2012 budget and propose 2012, 2013 Plan B budget.
Support with question.
Uh, Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Would the maker of the motion be willing to stipulate the Plan B, which specifically is to include the elimination of the energy manager and the administration assistant?
Uh, the, oh, I can, I can-
I know it, it says that on the spreadsheet, but I'd like that in the motion, if the maker is willing to include it in the motion.
Of what again?
I'll amend the motion if you'd like, I've two-
To specifically state the elimination of the administrative assistant and the elimination of the energy manager. I understand it's redundant, I'm asking that it be redundant.
Okay, I can, I can amend that emotion, actually, I don't mind.
Thank you, sir.
I would like, you want me to read the whole thing, do you have that?
Shouldn't need to, I think.
No, can you please read that again, just so that we are crystal clear on what we're asking?
All right. You, I'm gonna read the whole thing.
Thank you.
Move the Board of Education to accept the recommendation of the Director of Business and Operations to adopt the revised 2011, 2012 budget and propose 2012, 2013 Plan B budget, which includes the elimination of the energy manager, elimination of an admin assistant and an elimination of a board office administrator on there.
I restate my support.
Okay, you added one.
Yeah, you added one.
You added one.
Number the three that were already questioned.
Because he only said the administrative assistant and the energy manager, so.
Put all three on there.
Put all three on, so to vote it. Get this moving.
Remember the three that question-
Board office administrators, is that what you said?
Administrative assistant, energy manager.
And eliminate board office administrators, it says right here, I'm reading right off the Plan B.
Yep, well, we're being redundant on purpose.
So.
Okay, so, really quick, just so that we are clear, is Plan B, Sherry, I did have one, and I guess it's around the, the, the lack of savings for the energy manager, you know, so at, at what point do we amend the budget to incorporate that, you know, we're not, we're not gathering or getting those savings anymore, so, you know, I, again, I know that it impacts us and, and, you know, as Mr. McLaughlin said, we're talking about, you know, a salary of close to, what, $25,000, but, you know, you, you can't ignore the savings that we do get, but I do understand that it, we're kinda guessing what those savings are gonna be anyway, so, I mean, right now, it's $450,000 because of the type of year that we had, it could be less next year, you know, so will we have the opportunity to amend or make any adjustments that we need to in order to break even?
So, I wanna make sure I understand your question right, are you suggesting that once we start getting into the program with the elimination of an energy manager, at what point do I begin to look at what utility costs really are, whether they really are going up?
Right.
We will just monitor that throughout the whole process?
Okay.
I mean-
And I, I wanna clarify, is the board, is Plan B was a projected deficit?
It, yeah, that was my next question, is that we're, we're about to approve a deficit budget, you guys.
And we would have to file a deficit elimination-
We, as soon as the board is aware that they are in a potential budget or deficit mode, we have to alert the state and, and begin to prepare a deficit elimination plan, don't quote me on the days, summer probably between 30 and 60 days.
And what exactly, excuse me-
Go ahead.
What exactly is our, what our deficit be? I see, I don't remember.
$346,000.
Okay, and so-
But again, by accepting the budget and passing it, it's our, it's, it's my responsibility to alert the state that that's the direction the district is, is going to be in.
Okay, so, my next question is, and I don't know if this would be a matter of timing, but, and I'm just kind of drawing a picture, is that whether we have Plan A or Plan B, if hold harmless does not pass, we are still gonna be in a deficit budget regardless.
That's correct.
Which means that at that point, you could file for us being a deficit district.
Well, she has to do that.
I have to do that now.
If we vote on this, there's two scenarios, if, correct me if I'm wrong, if we approve this tonight, there's two scenarios that have to happen.
Right.
First, either you have to notify the state of our likelihood of going into deficit and tell them within so many days when our deficit elimination plan will be submitted to them, or scenario, pardon the pun, scenario B would be that perhaps the administration re-looks at the numbers that have been plugged in and take out that assumption of CAP savings, lost CAP savings, and woo-hoo, look, we balance.
We could revise the budget.
That's my point. That's been my point all evening.
So, is, is the board directing us to do that? Is that the message that we're hearing from the board, that our projection is for a deficit budget and we need clear direction here? Is the board saying you want us to revise this budget to show a positive fund balance and if so, I think you need to tell us what it is before you approve it?
You want a specific dollar value?
I think we need that.
Okay, what's the $450,000? Plug that back in.
If you take the 450, what, if we deduct the-
If you add back-
346,000, then that'd be it?
So, if you reduce the expenditures by 450,000 in relation to the savings that we, are, we expect that we wouldn't get with an energy manager, I hope I'm saying that right, we would end up with a budget of about a hundred and some, a little over $100,000. You following?
That's always as a good, $25,000 from the 450.
So, you want us to-
For, yeah, yeah.
Well, you want us to zero out the savings, the projected savings?
Yep.
That's all we need to know.
Which would be, the expenditures in essence will go down, which will make the fund balance go up, 450,000, to offset a negative 346, so you're almost at $100,000 of fund balance.
Because if it comes to the point where we realize, as we monitor it going forward, then we'll just have to make those cuts to adjust for that.
Right.
Exactly.
Well, technically, wouldn't it be the 450,000 plus the salary of 25 or 27?
That's-
That's already in plan.
Yeah, it's already in-
In, in the 450.
It's already in Plan B. But I understand.
Okay.
Then I think we're ready, yeah.
Okay, we have beat this horse. It's good and dead now. Uh, no offense to, uh, Peter.
Peter, you tasty, Ellen?
We are about to take a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Beard.
Okay, Mr. Thede?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley? Mrs. Kraut?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beards, yes. Mr. Kudrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fundenberg?
Yes.
7-0.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay.
Moving along.
I thought we would never see E. Yeah, rather, sorry.
Okay, next item, F, I think you just took care of E. Summer and winter millage levy, can we need approval?
We got it, Carl.
Hold on, hold on.
If we could have a quiet roar, please.
Hang on, yeah.
Thank you, you guys, we could go, I know we're, we're all tired, we've been here for quite some time, but, um, we kinda need to scurry through the rest of this, so if you could whispering our inside whisper voices.
Two-minute break for board members.
Do you-
We need a restroom break, I guess.
Yes.
Are we need getting a, okay, I've, it's been requested that we have, um-
Two-minute recess.
A two-minute recess.
Yeah, we can.
I don't know.
What was it?
All right, um, could you reiterate that, Mr. Kudrick, please?
All right, move the Board of Education to adopt the summer and winter millage levy for the 2012, 2013 tax collection as presented. Homestead, summer, 9.5, homestead, winter, 3.5, non-homestead, summer, 18.5, non-homestead, winter, 12.5.
It was moved by Mr. Kudrick, supported by, um, Ms. Kraut, any questions?
Discussion or question?
Mrs. Beard?
This is exactly what we're doing, I mean, this is the same as, um, what we have in place right now, correct?
Right now, we're loving the hold harmless, because we were entitled to that for 11/12, so that has been removed from this, but, and the second thing to that, remember, this is the first year that we're collecting 18 mills now. We have been collecting an amount close to 17 and a half for several years now and the community voted to renew the millage, and when they renewed it, they renewed it at 18.
And the non-homestead, the commercial property only.
That's correct, for non-homestead properties.
And will, this will come before us again when the hold harmless hopefully passes?
Yes, if it passes, this will come to you again, which will include another line item for operating, um, operating millage for homestead properties.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thede?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraut?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beard, yes. Mr. Kudrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fundenberg?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Next, we have a few surplus vehicles to dispose of, again, we always bring that to the board for approval. Madam Chair?
Mr. Kudrick.
Move the Board of Education to declare bus number 20, 37, 54, 111 and 118 as surplus vehicles.
Moved by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mr. McLaughlin, any questions?
I got one comment, maybe we can paint one of these up, take it to Flat Rock Speedway and use it as a fundraiser for the figure eight bus races. See if we can find a bus driver out there.
Yeah, also, maybe use it to pick up voters to vote for the, um, millage vote.
Anything's possible.
Well, we still own it until we sell it, so, you have to sell it to someone else.
I'll, I'll drive you to vote.
Now, I do wanna make a comment and I'm fortunate to have Mr. Malloy here, our resident expert on our vehicles, but I do wanna make it clear that, you know, with the elimination or surplusing these vehicles, we will be running a very tight ship next year in terms of special education transportation, so, I want you to be aware of that, as you know, we have not invested in bus purchases over the course of the last couple of years, and, you know, we've been talking about that this year as well, unfortunately, we just do not have the funds to, to move forward with purchases at this point.
So, just so that we're clear, the occupancy of, um, bus 54, 111 and 118, those transport our special education students?
Yes, um, Pat, can you elaborate on 54? It's a 48.
54 did, yeah, that one's very important, 'cause now we've got, we have to have a 65 passenger bus dressed up to do that run, which is a lot of, you know, them buses pull in small parking lots, so we're gonna have to do something in, in association with the eight, when we said we had seven, but we lost the motor and they'll have to pass inspection, that's all four in the old ones that we won't fit, seven more of that same vintage years, that next year won't pass inspection, so not only are we faced with, proper faced with salvaging today, with surplusing today, that next year, I can tell you straight up right now, there's gonna be seven more, so.
Wow.
Just a ray of sunshine.
I know.
One other question, um-
Yeah, I've looked at it from all different ways and it's not good either way, but, you know, not many-
I just want you to know-
... 2,000 buses in the place.
Just want you to be aware.
And are these buses equipped with the, the lifts or, okay?
None of these are.
No lift.
One of them in question, next year will be one of the seven that'll call that does have a lift in it.
Okay.
Vehicle grants out there?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy.
Thank you. All right, um, so we have a motion on the floor, um, motion by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mr. McLaughlin, any other questions?
Okay.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it's after, it's a thought, it's, so, once we, and we hear that we're gonna have to surplus more, so, I know we don't have any money, but is there some kind of plan?
Well, what happens, per your, per your board policy, sorry to cut you off, but I know where you were going, per our board policy, we put these out and accept quotes Well, what happens per your, per your board policy, sorry to cut you off, but I know where you were going. Per our board policy, we put these out and accept quotes for them, and then sell them.
Replacing.
Generally, what's gonna happen is, they're in such poor condition that I can show any of them, we've been robbing parts off them for quite some time now. What's probably gonna end up happening is I may have a chance to sell two little ones to the court, because they've been on me about it, but the bigger buses, in all reality, with the waste scrap-
Salvage.
They should generate a thousand to fifteen hundred bucks a piece, so that, I got, I got like ten of them, so you'll get, you know, you're gonna give me area-
Half a bus.
Ten thousand dollars when I'm done getting rid of what we got out there.
And that has already been incorporated into the budget for twelve, thirteen.
Do they have vehicle grants?
I'm sorry?
Do they have vehicle grants? Cause I know, like, with-
I'm not aware of any, but-
Cause I know when we applied for some, I know the government, or the city of Romulus, I mean, we got shot down for a couple of fire trucks, but there are grants out there, so we may want to have Paula check into them. I mean, just, there's a lot of grants out there, and there are vehicle grants.
Art's glad you walked back in the room.
That's her forte is grants, so.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh.
All right, moving on to item H.
Moving off pretty good, huh?
State aid loan resolution.
Madam Chairman, I move the Board of Education approve the borrowing of three point eight million dollars in state aid notes for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year as outlined in our text.
Support.
Moved by Mr. McGlocklin, supported by Mr. Kudrick. Any questions?
Discussion. Now, this means we're authorizing you to borrow this much if it's needed, but if less is needed, we can just borrow even less.
The only thing is that this actually, resolution is actually going to the state. I mean, this is the best projection through August of two thousand thirteen. We have to do all the way out, a projection of cash flow all the way up to August, uh, two thousand, two thousand thirteen, and ironically, August two thousand thirteen is the worst month for the district. But there are other areas in terms of the calendar or the fiscal year that we are experiencing negative cash flow. Um, where was I getting at with this? No, we're committed at this point to three point eight million dollars. What could change and be advantageous to us is the fact that it may not come out to be a five percent interest rate. This year, we paid about three point one percent. But in terms of putting this together and what the state recommends right now-
It might happen this year, but it's likely to happen this cycle while Snyder is still in office, they're really trying for ten months, uh, a different distribution of the-
This makes it difficult, because think about it, the hugest cash flow problem we have in this fiscal year isn't even in really this fiscal year, it's August of two thousand thirteen, so you're really borrowing ahead of time. It'd be nice to have a program like that.
Any other questions? All right, I have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh.
I'm going to need signatures of the Secretary and President after.
That's not me. Next item, normally in June, we have a, an executive session for the superintendent's quarterly evaluation. It was suggested, in anticipation of this being a long meeting, uh, that we postpone that. I'd like, I would like to schedule a date, because those get away from us otherwise.
How about the next board meeting?
The next board, uh, the next regular board meeting would be on the, uh, eleventh. No.
Doesn't need to-
Ninth.
The ninth, I, for some reason, I wrote the sixteenth. Yeah, it, yeah, it is, so we can schedule it at the end of the meeting on the ninth, if that's the board's pleasure. Is that all right, everyone?
No problem with it, it sounds-
I won't be able to make it, that's my chemo day.
How about the twenty-third?
Well, I would hope so. I'm planning on it.
Should we make it for the twenty-third, then?
Yes, please.
That's fine.
Okay, I will schedule for the twenty-third. Okay, uh, next, uh, there is a need for an executive session for negotiations. Um, uh, we have some information to share regarding a tentative agreement, and there will be action on the part of the board after the executive session, but we will need to, uh, have a roll call vote going to executive session, then if approved, we'll need to clear the room. Madam Chair?
I make a motion that we go into executive session for negotiations.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by, um, Mr. Kudrick. I need a roll call vote to go into executive session for, uh, negotiations on a, uh, paro contract.
That's you.
I'm sorry. Taking notes.
Mr. Thede?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mr. Thede? I'm sorry, Mr. Kudrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Fundenberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Beard, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, what's the answer?
All right, we are about to go into executive session.
Paraprofessional contract. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we reconvene to regular session.
Support.
Uh, motion by Ms. Buckley, supported by-
Fireman.
McGlock- Thede.
Fireman. Hollywood.
Uh, roll call.
Hollywood.
Mr. Thede?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beard, yes. Mr. Kudrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fundenberg?
Yes.
Seven oh.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move the Board of Education accept the letter of agreement as presented with the American Federation of Teachers, Michigan Federation of Teachers, AFL-CIO, and the Romulus Federation of Professionals, Paraprofessionals, Local thirty-four twenty-two for the two thousand twelve, thirteen school year as outlined in our-
Support.
McGlocklin, Kudrick?
Yeah, somewhere down there was like a bunch of people on that end, too.
Moved by Mr. McGlocklin, supported by Mr. Kudrick. Uh, any questions?
Comment?
Yes. Mr. McGlocklin?
Thank you to the paras.
Thank you. All right, um, have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh.
Okay, brings me to item L. Items of interest from the superintendent. Um, you have in your packet, uh, final, uh, wingspan, the senior edition. Also newsletters from Chartwell for April and May. Thank you from, uh, Board Member Sandra Crowe. Also, I want to mention briefly, uh, last month, um, myself, our Board President, and also our Teachers Association President, were invited to attend a conference in Cincinnati, uh, the National Labor Relations Conference, which is jointly sponsored by the, uh, U.S. Department of Education, the, uh, National Education Association, and the, um, American Federation of Teachers. Those are the two largest teaching unions in the country. The purpose of the con, uh, the conference, districts are invited from all over the country, or one of about fifty districts to attend, um, because of, uh, our history of labor management collaboration and the impact it's having on our teaching, so it was an honor to be invited. It was also free, it was out of state, but it was all expenses paid by the U.S. Department of Education and the union, and they have some sponsors as well. What we were required to do was present, um, our teacher evaluation system along with the process in developing that, which, as you recall, was a joint labor management process. We formed that committee over three years ago. That committee has gone on to address the numerous revisions that have been required in the evaluation system because of changes in the law, um, and they'll have some more tests, uh, in the very near future. The other thing that came out of that, we were in a, um, we participated in a share case where we shared our, what we've been doing, but we were also able to attend, wander around and attend other districts across the country. They came from as far as Alaska and Hawaii. Um, they are still part of our country, and, um, and as close as Cincinnati, where the conference was, and we learned a great deal. We also, uh, did not realize going in that there were four, uh, or three other Michigan districts that were invited, so lots going on in Michigan, a lot of good things. And, uh, we left the conference, having spent some time with those other three Michigan districts out with Mount Clemens, here on our neighbor to the south, and Farmington Hills. And making a commitment that we're gonna try to do more in terms of labor management collaboration, and we're gonna work with those other districts to develop some other platforms in terms of identifying ways that, um, that, um, promote teacher leadership, which is something that we all, all agreed on, but also, uh, we are looking into, um, addressing, uh, some other issues that affect our budget. So that we can do something that's more sustainable with our teachers, and believe me, they feel our pain as well. You know, the teachers have given concessions along with the other bargaining units, too, but, so this was a nice chance for us to, um, to collaborate with other districts. Next item on my, um, on my report, um, I also learned Friday that Romulus Middle School and Romulus High School received the Twenty-First Century Learning Grants through Eastern Michigan University. I'm happy to report that these grants will go for the next five years, right? And they will pay for, um, three hours of after-school support, four nights a week, thirty-two weeks a year. Each of those years, which, uh, which is just a terrific opportunity for our kids, so we'll be working with Eastern Michigan University to fit those programs into some of the things we're already doing with Community One Stop and CIG Grant and everything else, but it's a, it's a wonderful safety net for our children. We're very fortunate to receive that grant.
What's the value on that grant, Carl?
I don't have a cash value. Um, I'm not su, I'm not sure I know. I'll, I'll check and see, but-
They're gonna stay three hours, they're gonna supply support for our students, three hours after school is dismissed, four nights a week?
Uh-huh.
For thirty-
Thirty-two weeks, it's not the whole year, but-
Thirty-two weeks.
Yeah.
And that's for five years.
Uh-huh.
And that's the middle school and high school. And that support will be as an entourage-
No, it's the, you, did you say middle school and not-
It's a middle school and the high school, not all, both, both buildings were applied and approved.
How are they gonna get home, or is that on them?
That's part of the grant cost.
Transportation is included?
Yeah, they're gonna build that in.
But, okay.
But that is for the students, like, for tutoring, anything they need help in, stuff like that?
Well, we have to work with Eastern on, on, there are some specific things, but it's, it's to support the students and, and to promote learning. It's not a credit recovery program.
No, not a credit, but like, if somebody's struggling in math-
Extended learning opportunities, so it might be, um, practical applications for the math that you're working on.
Okay. Good.
Yes. Also want to let you know that summer school began today. First day, chaotic as usual on the first day, lots of last night's psyop, signups.
Organized chaos.
Is that what you call it?
That's what it was.
First day of school.
And I also want to announce, um, that, uh, again, it was mentioned a little bit in passing during the boarding, our board office hours, uh, for summer are seven-thirty to five-thirty, um, Monday through Friday. The board, uh, the entire district will be closed the week of July second to July sixth. Uh, those are our, um, furlough days, district shutdown days. And that concludes my report.
All right, we are at communications and expressions from the public, and unless anybody else, anybody else has anything to say, you're welcome to, but I think we've kind of, um, tackled the, the task at hand. Um, so, at the- Uh, well, we add concerns of board members, questions and or concerns. Um, anybody?
Um-
I'm sorry.
Not bad.
I just, I just like to, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Thede.
Um, I'd just like to thank everybody for putting up with the heat tonight in here, and, uh, you know, staying for our long meetings, and it'd be nice if everybody comes to all the meetings all the time. Now, when there's just special stuff on the agenda, it'd be nice to get your feedback.
Anybody else?
Nothing for me.
Um, I just wanted to say, Sandy, you know, I wish you the best on your treatment, and, you know, just praying for you that all goes well, um, with your journey. One of the, um, real quick, I wanted to, um, let everybody know, we can dress casually, school's out, so, um, fellas, you can ditch the ties.
Good thanks for that memo.
Right, right. Well, you know, here go, and because it was our, our, we didn't, that was one of the things that we didn't get an, an opportunity to talk about at the study session, um, and because it was our last official board meeting, um, that was another reason why it was kind of missed. I am thinking that this is pretty much it, unless someone else has, Mr. Kudrick?
Some people asked about the, the millage campaign. There's been a lot of interest, and there's been a lot of people commenting. The high school has been very, very, uh, active on things, even though school is out. And they promoted with campaigns, posters, they were at the prom toast, uh, the coaches are really getting out there, getting students involved. We've had a lot of staff members getting students registered as voters. Mrs. Abdo took time out of her day on the weekend and went over and got countless commitments from people about the election, even was able to register many people that didn't even know where to go vote at. She was able to inform them on that. Principal at the high school has gotten postcards out to people and getting information to the students.
And he used his own money.
Mrs. Abdo had sticker, um, my mother. Mrs. Abdo had a, she paid out of her own pocket for bumper stickers for Save Our Sports. A lot of the coaches, Mr. Hanson's really been communicating constantly through the high school to a lot of the staff, and there's been a lot of other community members and other staff members that have really wanted to step up and help. Uh, there's been some from the paras that have wanted to help, and which is great. I mean, it's all, all welcome, and we've got the flyers that are going out. We gave Anna some flyers today. Mrs. Fundenberg got the flyers designed, I got them printed off, didn't cost us anything. I was able to find paper that was hid somewhere on a shelf that worked out just right for it. That's it on the election thing, but I got a question, a comment, actually, Mr. Williams said earlier about saving the district money. I know I brought this subject up about working through the summer. Why is the high school working in the afternoon? We have control over the building, we can tell units not to be in our building in the evening, so everybody is on the day shift. Kind of a conflict of interest for me, but I think people in the community like to know themselves, too.
Can I answer that right now? Okay. So, um, back when we were deciding, or we were trying to plot out how, how we can best serve our overall community, as well as save as much energy as possible. That was one of the things that was kind of flushed out of those discussions, was the need for that building to have, for, for students and, and community, the community to have more access to that building. We were able to shorten the amount, but we weren't able to shorten it so that it was just available during the day. The biggest obstacle was, um, the availability of the space that multiple groups want needed to use concurrently, and they can't. They had to stagger those, the, those usages. So that was the prime, that's the primary reason that the high school is open. We looked at every possible way to reduce or keep that, that building open as, as little as possible, but keeping in mind the needs of our community as well. That's, this is the plan that we came up with.
The, the areas that the community-
That were so packed that people could not, could not get in.
It was primarily athletics, absolutely.
We used the middle school, too, for some of them, athletic sports.
And some of them are being used in the middle school as well.
Quite honestly, I mean, I, like I said, it's a little bit of a conflict of interest, but I mean, people have brought this up to me, and this is comments from other folks. If you're gonna have the biggest building in the district open the longest period of time, but everybody else gets to be put on reduced shifts, or not reduced shifts, but changed shifts, wouldn't it be smart and fair to everybody to put them on the same shift? You know, that union has done a lot, and they've been on the four-ten, and a lot of them kind of anticipated it again. Now, whatever happened with negotiations between you and the union president, that's, that's your business, but it just seems that in my eyes, it's like they're the only ones working their contracted shift, and everybody else got shifted to days. And if people comments to me, where, seems like you're punishing them. And I kind of try to stay out of it, for everybody knows the obvious reason, but, you know, the comments are coming up to me, and and they're not coming from a person that I know. They're coming from other people in the community.
Yeah, I've been approached as well.
So-
Well, one of the, you know, one of the things that we want to make sure that we're always adhering to is the, the collective bargaining agreement. Um, in past, in many in past years, the practice has been, if the building needs to be open, then the employee changes their shift. That is in direct violation to the collective bargained agreement.
So why do we got the middle school on days?
Because we were able to condense all of those needs, anything that was an afternoon or an evening need, we were able to shift it over to the one building that is open. For example-
See a list of what events are going on in high school currently, this week, please.
Okay.
Did we, do we say, our building, central office, still open five days a week?
Mm-hmm.
How about our staff in here? Is it, they're not working four-ten's, are they?
They are, but we're staggered.
Administrator, non, non-union.
Not the union people.
So how many on the staggered days would we have in this building, the lowest amount of people, you know what I'm saying? Like, what's the maximum?
Friday would be the lowest day, and it's probably three people.
Is, is that worth being open with the electricity, the air, the heat, the water flushing? I mean, the building cost wise?
We can't not have supervisors around, because we were, you know, we're carrying out our maintenance operations and everything else, and, um, up until tonight, you know, we've been saving more than enough through our energy management program to make up for the, you know, the cost of, um, you know, keeping the lights on and the air on.
Hopefully, those three people in the building can shut everything off when they're not using it.
Well, that's-
Well, we've been without air since Wednesday.
Yeah, we've been without, probably already saved enough in the last four days.
I, I just have one question, kind of, on, can that conversation, is it, are we past the, the-
No.
Can that conversation be revisited by our, our union who wants to do the four-ten?
Well, if, if-
Or is it, you know, totally-
The union doesn't want to, the union didn't want to do the four-ten, let me be really clear, and our door is open, and we've made that clear to the union, that, that our door is open.
That's not the communication that I got.
I think, no, I'm sure, I'm sure it's not, but here's, here's the bottom line.
And it's probably not what you got either.
Right, right. We can't-
That is absolutely true.
All the workers is up here, all they ask for first, how old you, with the times, which you would not get.
Well, they ask for, they ask for things-
They ask for it, Carl. They ask for it, and I can get proof of it, and I can even call her up here, or I can call the other one back.
So, I guess at this point, I just-
May I, may I respond to you?
No, because you know what, as it is, I'm trying to, you have to do your shit.
Don't-
Put your hands up again and see if I don't come up to that counter. Now, I'm not playing with you, no.
No, Jake, Jake, calm down.
I am scared.
Hold on a second, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm tired of that.
You know what? You need to settle down. This is a me, this is a meeting of the Board of Education.
Can I? Okay. Mr. Williams?
I don't care. I treat you with respect. I think you need to reciprocate.
How did you treat me with respect the day earlier?
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
You weren't doing all this?
I didn't interrupt you.
Okay.
Hold on a second. As the board is the witness, was he doing that or not when I was speaking to Rebecca earlier? Was he or was he not?
I wasn't even paying attention to you.
You know what, I was looking at you, honestly.
Right.
I did, I shook my head.
I was looking at you.
I shook my head.
I stood here and shook my head at you when you were talking? No, I didn't. I stood up there and said that, didn't I, Carl? But again, we run into this problem again, with you and me, and over the disrespect. I have no problem giving you the respect you deserve running this community. But now it's my turn. I'm talking to the board. Don't you sit here and think you're gonna talk to me like you're my dad and tell me what to do. I'm a grown, forty-four-year-old man.
I'm a grown forty-four-year-old man.
And, and.
Hold on. And you will talk to me and stuff. Now, when I come to your office, which I have, I gave you the respect which you deserved, did I not?
And did I treat you with respect?
And did I not? But are you treating me with respect now telling me what?
I'm trying.
I did this, and I did, no, you're not. No, you're not, and then when I sit here and say something, that is a bold-faced lie. They wanted it. They weren't given a letter.
Were you in the meeting?
I've got the next best thing.
I wasn't in the meeting either, and I have the next best thing, and we have stories that come clear.
So, so.
So then, we'll four, we'll, the five of us will get together, then if they lie to me, I will put my wife in check in front of you, and I will put Kim in check in front of you if they lie to me.
I'm not asking.
Well, and, and so, I.
No, but I am, because then I owe you an apology. But to sit here and say this, that, and the other, I don't care, but when I have something to say, and you tell me that I need to settle down, and this, that, and the other, and you're trying to hold to me with the disrespect, it's like, the one lady stood up here and said it earlier, love most of you on the board, there's no faith in the board, there's no faith in him, and once I realize, and I should have opened my mouth earlier, but I wasn't paying attention to the thing, like your little policy provisions, which says we have to keep a superintendent that's highly educated and everything else, give me a break. Basically, you're saying you can't give a document, you need to. That was dirty, not to take that to the public. Look in your board pack.
I guess I'm trying to figure out what you're talking about at this point, Mr. Williams.
Your little board policy revision, take a look in your board pack and what that says.
That's state law.
That's state law.
Is that we keep, that we have each district.
When you have to keep a highly educated, and this, that, and the other, you can hire a.
The policy comes from M A S B and the state.
I'm shutting my mouth.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know.
Just drop it, I'm wrong, I apologize, but as far as that little stuff right there between me and him.
Right.
You better handle it, because I'm going to see you after this meeting, and I'm going to turn in my little written complaint, then I'm going to take it to the paper, and then I'm going to tell people why, which slices my wife's own throat and drives her crazy. For every person who's sitting out, oh, yes for the Millage, and my group will be behind them telling them why they should vote for that right there.
And I, you know, I can't refute your opinion.
That's okay, Danielle, I'm good, I'll see you after the meeting, I can deal with Carl.
And that's where I was, where I was going with my concern, was can this conversation be revisited with the bargaining unit? Is that like a yes or a no? And what do we need to do to make that happen again? Because, again, I think.
We've made it very clear to the bargaining unit that we are interested in the four-ten